Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interest and conflict of interest where relevant and a requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? There are no apologies. Councillors, can I draw your attention, please, to the motion of condolence for former Alderman John Andrews, Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. It is with great sadness that I announce the passing of John Andrews, the former Liberal councillor for the Gap Ward. And I also want to acknowledge that a number of John's relatives are in the gallery and also watching online as well. John was born in 1935, became a surveyor before serving as the councillor for the Gap from 1976 to 1982. He was most recently a resident of Curroay and is survived by his wife Valda and their three children, Scott, who lives in Brisbane, Kate and Emily. John was a passionate member of his local community, he was an Artet supporter of the Liberal Party and active in campaigns, community campaigns around Ash Grove and the Gap. He was really a trailblazer at the beginning of the Liberal Party and now the LMP team in council, so the team that we continue on with the legacy of today. He was the first Liberal to hold the Gap Ward and the Liberals of the LMP have held the Gap Ward since 1976. He was also the leader of the opposition for a short time from September 1980 to June 1981. I personally never had the pleasure of meeting John, but everyone who I've talked to that knew John spoke extremely highly and had a great deal of respect for him, not only as a councillor, not only as a member of the Liberal Party, but also as a private citizen and an active community member. So today we remember John and his contribution to the city and to the community and we pass on our sincere condolences to John's family and friends.
Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I also do rise to speak of John Andrews. John was the first of the Western giants. He had a strong interest in city planning, having a background in surveying. Always rising to his feet to speak on planning matters, John was the first councillor in the Gap Ward to have his office in the ward. So he could actually be closer to the people and serve their interests. I had the pleasure to meet John a couple of years ago, along with other Gap councillors, Brian Halliman and Geraldine Knapp. We actually had the opportunity to spend a few minutes over a cup of tea, share a few yarns, tell a few tall tales and we took away a memorable photo of the time. To long-time residents of the ward, John is well remembered. He was a fantastic representative of the people of the Gap Ward. His legacy will remain. And just on another thing about John, his presence around the ward is still present today. I come across many residents who remember him quite well. We've had a number of councillors since and history would say that people's memory should fade, but that's not the case with John. So I might finish up by saying, John Andrews, gone but not forgotten.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I just, not knowing former Alderman John Andrews myself, but hearing what the Lord Mayor has had to say in the council for the Gap, I'd just like to, on behalf of my Labour colleagues, pass on our sympathies to John's wife and children and all the people that are close to him. And he has obviously made a contribution, not only to the Liberal Party and now the LMP, but also the Gap Ward. And I note that Councillor Toomey obviously was able to pay respects to his service directly to him and receive some advice. And I know from time to time, former councillors can be thorns in the side of current councillors. That's never been, never been, never been the case for me and I've always had great support from my two predecessor councillors, councillor, former councillor Victoria Newton and Denise Herbert. So I certainly appreciate, that must have been a special thing for Councillor Toomey. So we obviously pass on our deepest sympathies to John's family.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I too would like to offer my condolences to former councillor John Andrews and his family. And I did not know John Andrews to my knowledge. I may have met him in the Liberal Party many years ago, but I know that people who give up their lives for public service are very committed to their local communities and it's a big ask on all the family and friends who are involved, because it's not just yourself, it disrupts your family and their lives as well. So my condolences to the Andrews family on the death of their father and thank you for his service. I might just ask the Lord Mayor to make sure we're notified about these things in future. I mean, this is the first I knew about it when I sat down and you stood up to speak. So if you could let us know in future so we can be more prepared for these types of condolence motions, that would be very appreciated.
Further speakers? They're being done, Lord Mayor. I'll now move that motion. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
And the contrary, no. That's carried. Thank you, councillors. We have on the agenda, the confirmation minutes, please. Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,604th meeting, held on Tuesday the 15th of October 2019, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Richards, seconded by Councillor Marks, that the minutes of the 4,604th meeting of council, held on the 15th of October 2019, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant today. His name is Donald Campbell and he will be addressing us on redesigning the Brisbane Metro, Metro's proposed Melbourne Street bus stops. Mr Pearce. Welcome, Mr Campbell. You're welcome to stand or sit as you prefer. Mr Pearce will start your timer to your left and it begins, and your timer, five minutes begins when you begin. Please also just press the button in front of you to make sure the microphone's on. That's it. Welcome and please begin at your convenience.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors, thank you for allowing me to address you today. As some of you are aware, my name is Donald Campbell and I'm one of the co-convenants of the Brisbane CBD Bicycle Users Group. I am here to address the opportunity to ensure that all members of the community benefit from city shaping projects such as Brisbane Metro and specifically the change to the urban landscape at South Brisbane. The redesign of Melbourne Street as part of the Cultural Centre station redevelopment presents a chance to incorporate modern urban principles to the streetscape and cater to the people of Brisbane, whether they are on foot, bicycle or public transport. As outlined in the released documents from Brisbane City Council, the current design proposes for bike lanes to be sandwiched between loading and moving buses. Unfortunately, this is not world's best practice and will result in buses pulling across the bike lanes, creating a high-stress environment for both people on bicycles and bus drivers. The CBD Bug who I represent proposes world's best practice, where bicycle traffic travels behind the bus stops as outlined in the petition titled Protected Bike Lanes for Melbourne Street, North Quay and Adelaide Street. There is a perception from some, including within the Brisbane City Council offices, that this design is unsafe for people on foot, as people have to cross the bike lanes when accessing or egressing the bus stops. Similar concerns were held in London when this world's best practice was installed. The fears have proven to be unfounded. This design is so safe and sensible that even on Wurkhenberg in Utrecht, where 35,000 people cycle up and down the street every day, people can easily and safely access, cross the bike lanes to access the bus stops. It is common sense that people on bicycle and heavy vehicles, in this case buses, do not mix. This is incredibly important around bus stops that will have in excess of 70 buses per hour accessing them. That is why we consulted with the Rail, Tram and Bus Union and they have agreed that the best practice for their members, the bus drivers, would be to have protected bike lanes that travel behind the bus stops. We are also sympathetic to the needs of pedestrians. That is why the CBD Bug consulted with Queensland Walks about our proposal and they have confirmed in principle support. The CBD Bug understands the importance of using ratepayers' funds for the maximum benefit of the people of Brisbane. With this in mind, the CBD Bug consulted, with this in mind, the CBD Bug consulted relevant professionals and found that due to the assumed level of works required to Melbourne Street, installing protected bike lanes would be price comparative with the current proposal by Brisbane City Council themselves. Not only are protected bike lanes price comparative, but they appeal to everyone, regardless of age, gender or ability, meaning more people will use them more often. This means dollar for dollar, more people will jump on a bicycle and better bang for the buck. Drawing more people to the area will also boost business and restaurants, as has similar bike lanes throughout the world have proven. In summing up, installing world's best practice of protected bike lanes will result in a safe, appealing, low-stress design that supports cyclists of all ages and abilities, pedestrians, bus passengers and bus drivers, and provide a showcase transit hub that will draw people to the cultural precinct. Furthermore, it can be delivered at a similar cost, but with far greater return for the investment. As I sit before you, I can state that representatives of cyclists, bus drivers, public transport users and pedestrians have all provided in principle or full support for world's best practice of protected bike lanes to be installed to Melbourne Street as part of the Brisbane Metro project. I ask all councils, when you vote on this petition, remember it is not just people that happen to use bicycles that desire this proposal, but also the people representing the other three user groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Campbell. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you and thank you, Mr Campbell, for coming in today. I note your concerns around the protected bike lanes for Melbourne Street as Brisbane Metro and we did discuss it this morning again in committee. Councillor Shree brought that up with the, knowing that you were coming in this afternoon. Just to go back to the beginning, Metro project obviously gone through a lot of stages for the design to get to where we are at the moment. We started in 2017 through a 12-month detailed assessment and we released that draft report in 2018. So the draft report is what you would have seen and had the consultation on in the very first stage as well. I know the CBD Bug put in a submission whether it was you directly or with your group as well and we thank you for doing that. But it's important to remember at the moment, we are still just in that base case stage. So that base design, which is what you're talking about now, we have decided on separated two-way cycle across Victoria Bridge, which is something that you advocated for, so I'm happy that we could accommodate that as well. But in developing the design for Melbourne Street, we undertook an options assessment process that included the consideration of two-way cycle way and it wasn't actually preferred due to the conflict between bus stop users, pedestrians and cyclists beneath the South Brisbane Rail Bridge. Now in saying that, that is our base case detailed design at the moment. We have, within the last couple of months, been directed by the state government to do some revisions around other options for the station, which may or may not change the number of buses that come through that precinct as well. So it may be a totally different thing that we're looking at for the bikeways in the very near future. But at the moment, the two on-road cycle lanes are envisaged along Melbourne Street instead. They did the traffic modelling on that and once the metro is operational, there will be 350 fewer buses that will pass through the Cultural Centre precinct at surface level during the peak hours, which means only about 30 to 40 buses per hour through Melbourne Street, which is a great reduction on what we have there, particularly beneath the rail bridges in peak hours as well. So we are trying to think of the other road users as well and we will contribute to that whole boulevard concept for the pedestrians, the scramble crossings and obviously a much reduced area for the cars, because they won't need it along Melbourne Street at all. So we're still going through that collaborative partnership phase at the moment. So we are, at the moment, as I said, what you're talking about is the base case design. We are working with the partners, we're seeing what or how that may change based on the investigations we're doing now from the state's direction and we will have further investigations into these lane arrangements as they occur and we'll definitely keep you in the loop with those as well. So I suppose what I'm saying is it's not set in stone at the moment, but we are looking at all the options and making sure that we take all of those road users into account. Just to say, there is a petition on the table with regards to this issue that I will be moving in committee to take off the table so that we can discuss that in debate later this afternoon as well. So you can watch online or stay here this afternoon. But thank you for coming in this afternoon and look forward to working with you as we move through the detailed design process.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr Campbell. Mr Pearce will assist you.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to move a procedural motion that the petition requesting the council implement additional cycling facilities in CBD and alternative cycling arrangements in South Brisbane as part of Brisbane Metro come off the table immediately.
Seconded.
I have a procedural motion moved by Councillor Cassidy, seconded by Councillor Cook, that the motion, that the resolution that is on the table regarding the matter that we're discussing come off the table now. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
The contrary, no. All right. Julie. Can I thank the officers for being prepared for such and there are copies of the report for those who don't have a perfect memory. The report that is now going to be discussed is now being distributed to all councillors. We'll take a moment for that to happen, but I would like to remind the councillors that in this instance, we will resume debate at the point where we left it and that means that both Councillor Davis and Councillor Cassidy have spoken on this matter. I will therefore call for any further speakers on the matter that is being circulated at the moment. Further speakers to this resolution. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Adams obviously touched on a number of the points here, but we have, at this point in time, a number of procurements underway for Metro and one of those is to select a preferred tenderer or a tenderer for the design and construction of the major works. Those major works include the Cultural Centre precinct station, Cultural Centre precinct works and include things like changes to Victoria Bridge and also the Adelaide Street Tunnel. We have at this point in time, a reference design or a concept design and effectively what we have done with Metro is we've put a lot of work into preparing a starting point design, but it is very clear in the way that we are structuring the tender going forward, that that reference design or concept design will change going forward. There is no doubt about that and it will change in many ways, but this is certainly something that I'm willing to consider, willing to revisit and looking at in the detailed design work that is ahead. And as Councillor Adams said, there's still a number of things that will, may change in the Cultural Centre precinct. Obviously, the state needs to provide feedback to us on which of the station options we'd like to go with, whether it's the original station or whether it's the other two alternatives that we've been asked to look at. We still haven't heard back on which one they would prefer. So Councillor Adams and I are looking forward to meeting with Minister Bailey in the near future. Unfortunately, Minister Bailey wouldn't meet with Councillor Adams, but we have locked in a meeting now and we are looking forward to getting his direction and guidance on which of those station options he would like us to pursue. Obviously, our assessment is that the two alternative options were rubbish, absolute rubbish, an entire waste of time and money, but if he wants to do that, then by all means he can put the money on the table and we will build them. But ultimately, this particular location is very much going to be finessed in the design, whether it's station one, two or three. There will be a lot more work that will be required. Our desire is to see improved accessibility and safety for all road users. And this is not just a public transport project, this is a project that will help reshape the city and the way that people move around the city. As part of the project already, we have put forward a very positive improvement to Victoria Bridge, which will see a separated cycle lane all the way along the length of Victoria Bridge and we're certainly happy to have a look at this precinct underneath the railway bridge at South Brisbane and see how that design can be further finessed. So at this stage, there's still a process ahead of us, there's still more design work to do and I am simply saying, in line with the response here for this petition, that we will do that further work and we very much hear the feedback being provided by CBD Bug and other interested stakeholders and residents on this matter and we will certainly take that into account going forward.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on the cycling facilities along Melbourne Street to South Brisbane as part of the Metro project. Firstly, can I say, I became aware of this earlier today when I saw pictures on social media that were posted by some of the bike user groups, which show clearly what I think has to be the stupidest and most dangerous bike lane arrangement that I've seen in this city for a very long time, which is wedging a little green unprotected lane in the middle of four lanes of buses. So you're going to have buses changing lanes, cyclists riding through and honestly, I cannot think of a worse kind of arrangement to be undertaken by council. I'm not an expert on cycling by any means and I don't claim to be and, you know, but I can see without question how dangerous what council describes in this report before us today as the safest, most appropriate option for bike users. Now, the alternative that I have seen also published by the Bug earlier today is what I describe as a floating bus stop with the bike lane running behind the bus stops between the pedestrian footpath and the floating bus stop. Now, that's similar to the arrangement that's been put on place in Annolly Road, following the coroner's recommendations after Rebecca May's death a few years ago. So there is precedent for this kind of change to infrastructure to occur. What concerns me is the double talk or the doublespeak from the deputy mayor and the Lord Mayor here today, which is, the report in writing is telling us that the preferred option is considered appropriate and the safety assessments say that is the option to pursue. The deputy mayor is sort of, kind of saying they might look at it, but in our formal response to this today, it clearly states that we are happy with the, council is happy with the current proposed cycle lanes. The only words of any kind of relief in there are, further investigations can occur as part of detailed design and planning. It doesn't say will, it doesn't say should, you know, so there is a problem with what is written in this report and I flag I'm going to move an amendment which might help us with this. But what I do want to say is that we have to be looking at what is the safest option here. I mean, I can't understand the politics of all of this. I mean, one week the Lord Mayor gets up and says, the metro is ready to go, it's the state holding us back, then we find out there's no design, there's no final design, but there's tenderers, but there's no final design and we might do more consultation on design. This project is a balls-up. It is just the biggest mistake this council has made. You've got to get all of these things right and then you go out to tender. If you're tendering for the delivery of this without a finalised design, look at the stuff up that you've just cost Brisbane ratepayers hundreds of millions of dollars because you went to tender before you had approval.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Councillors, firstly, interjections are tolerable to a point, but please make them creative. And further, Councillor Johnston, please direct your comments through the Chair. Councillor Shree, your point of order.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I was just drawing your attention to the fact that certain councils were calling out unnecessarily.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, so let's be clear, the council's political rush on this has cost ratepayers hundreds of millions of dollars. They went to tender on a design and were ready to announce the design, but did not have approval to build their project on someone else's land. Now, today again, we're hearing that they've gone ahead with the tender for the delivery of this portion of the project without a final design. This is insane. You just keep making one mistake after the other.
Point of order.
Point of order. Claimed to be misrepresented.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Well, I haven't mentioned the Lord Mayor particularly, but in my view, this is another mistake, that we are being led down a path where we will not get value for money for Brisbane ratepayers because tenderers are going to be asked to revise everything. That costs money, Lord Mayor. That costs money. I mean, your predecessors knew that, they wouldn't be doing this, I can tell you that now. So in its current form, the response to this petition is completely inadequate and I am moving the following amendment. In the recommendation, which is on page six, in the third paragraph, to delete the first sentence of the third paragraph, which is, safety assessments have determined the current proposed cycle lane arrangements on Melbourne Street is appropriate and confirm this configuration as the preferred design option for the project.
Seconded.
All right, so I have an amendment resolution from Councillor Johnston, seconded by, I believe it was Councillor Griffiths. I just need to clarify this, you're deleting the first sentence of the, I guess, the third paragraph on this, this begins on this page, is that correct?
It's the third, it's the third paragraph down, safety assessments have determined the current proposed.
And you want, the proposal is merely to delete that first sentence and begin the paragraph with the word however? Or do you want to delete the entire paragraph?
Just that sentence that I read out.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to clarify, please.
Yes.
Because these resolutions have to be simple or else they're in writing, so I'm trying to make it simple, so you can do it without it being in writing. Do councillors understand? All right.
Happy to read it again.
No, the paragraph that begins with the word safety assessments, the first sentence of that paragraph be deleted. That is effective on, so when you take page number six, page number six.
Can I just clarify, so we're talking about in the response, we're not talking about in the E and C report, which we're talking about in the response to petitioners, if we want to make it very clear.
That's right.
Thank you.
In the report that was distributed to everybody by Mr Pearce, on page six of that report, paragraph three, beginning, safety assessments, that first sentence alone be deleted, is the resolution. I will accept it because it is simple, what is being asked now, and that is all it is, delete that sentence. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. So what I'm, am I right to go?
Yes, please, ten minutes.
Thank you. So what I'm proposing here is, in the recommendation, which is the outcome to the consideration of the petition, for those following along at home or here in the chamber, that we are deleting the paragraph or the sentence within the paragraph that says that the proposed arrangements are appropriate. Now, these are the ones that have the bike lanes wedged in between the bus lanes and certainly it's, in my opinion, it is not the safest arrangement. We've heard today from the Bug and they have a number of supporting groups behind them indicating that there are concerns with the lane arrangements. If we delete this one sentence, what will be left is the following sentence, which says, further investigation to these lane arrangements can occur as part of detailed design. So we're leaving open that there can be further detailed design without the limitation that the current arrangements are third and the safest by council. That send a clear message to council, to any contractors, that we are not locked into the proposed design. the proposed design. It's obviously, this has all happened very suddenly, this is my simple way of suggesting that we clarify that we are not going to follow the proposed current design. If the deputy mayor is genuine about reassessing this, she will support this amendment, and she will give clear direction back to the design and project team that they need to reassess the bike lanes in this area, and give proper consideration to the Bug's suggestion of floating bus stops and bike lanes behind those bus stops. So I just encourage all councillors to support the amendment.
Further speakers to the amendment. Deputy Mayor.
Look, we absolutely don't support such a ridiculous amendment that takes a sentence out and absolutely changes no intent. It clearly says there that further investigation into these lane arrangements can occur as part of the detailed design and planning. Taking out the safety assessments that show that this is the most appropriate for the current design doesn't change that. It's not an amendment, it makes no difference to the intent, so we don't support it.
First, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to support the amendment, because I think it does send a very clear message to cyclists, to bus drivers who have skin in the game on this issue. They are deeply concerned about the interaction between cyclists and buses, and we know what the devastating outcome can be when large, heavy vehicles are interacting with cyclists. We've seen that over in councillor Shree's ward already once, we don't need to see that again. So this sends a very clear message that the arrangements in the current preferred design, well, will not be the basis going forward in terms of looking at what the arrangement should be when it comes to safe cycling infrastructure as part of the Brisbane Metro project. And we're not even sure anymore what the preferred design for this project is, Chair. I mean, we thought the preferred design for the Brisbane Metro was a Paris-style subway system. That's what the people of Brisbane were told when they cast their vote at the 2016 election.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Do you understand, Mr Cassidy, councillor Cassidy can't speak on the actual petition today, but that is not the amendment. He's discussing the substantive debate, sentence in or sentence out?
I agree. So I appreciate the point you're trying to make, councillor Cassidy, but the resolution before us is whether this sentence remains in this document or not.
Yeah, and the point I'm making, Chair, is it shouldn't remain in this response because we have absolutely no idea what the preferred design is anymore. I mean, anything this Lord Mayor touches turns to rubble. I mean, you've just got to look at Kingsley Smith Drive, his signature project as infrastructure chair. Look at the Metro now, this design that we have before us is completely up in the air, completely up in the air now, Chair. The administration, the LMP here, went to tender on this project without any approvals whatsoever, and now we...
Point of order?
Point of order to Lord Mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented?
Noted.
I don't believe the Lord Mayor has spoken on the amendment.
He's spoken, we have had a very generous interpretation of this for some time.
Fair enough.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Chair. So the LMP, you know, had to redesign this project, you know, half a dozen different times, and we're at the end of 2019, after this was first proposed in January 2016, and we are no closer whatsoever to seeing any soil turned on this project, except that when it comes to cyclists and when it comes to bus drivers, those that are and should be most concerned around these arrangements that council has released as a preferred design on something that is completely up in the air now because of this Lord Mayor's lack of proper planning and consultation with other levels of government around this project. We're seeing a very dangerous situation for cyclists being pushed here in this preferred design. So I think it makes perfect sense, given the deputy mayor says in different forums here, which she said in this chamber on record and in committee, that new designs should be looked at out there in terms of floating bus stops and more protection, and she has said that. This gives a very clear intent around what council's position is, in that we need to look at better arrangements for cyclist safety there, and the preferred design put forward by council is no longer appropriate.
First, sorry, Lord Mayor, your misrepresentation.
Yeah, and I wasn't given the opportunity to respond to councillor Johnston either.
I was going to come back to that in the substantive, because...
Yep. Okay. Specifically, in relation to the tender, which actually the strategic contracted plan came through to council, for all councillors to see, was for the design, and after that, the construction of the project.
It looks like I've got a point of order, councillor Shree first.
Thanks, Mr Chair. My understanding was that when someone claims to be misrepresented, they have to state what the misrepresentation was and then briefly state why it was a misrepresentation, not engage in extended debate.
Thank you, councillor Shree, I'll just take councillor Johnston's, I suspected similar. Councillor Johnston?
Councillor Johnston?
Okay, yeah, Lord Mayor, please, please do not use misrepresentation as an opportunity to rebut arguments, but merely address the central...
Yeah, there was an incorrect statement made about the tender and contracting process for Metro, which I'm correcting. The documents which came through to council clearly pointed out...
Point of order.
That it was detailed design and the construction after that.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston?
Yes, misrepresentation is about something that the mayor has said, not about what he says is a different matter of policy, and he's deliberately abusing, he's deliberately abusing the rules of procedure here.
Thank you for your advice. Lord Mayor, as I said, misrepresentation, please do not use it as an opportunity to rebut earlier arguments, but please address the central misrepresentation, and please focus on brevity. Lord Mayor.
Yes, very briefly, I made it very clear that detailed design was always part of the contract for Metro that we're now assessing at the moment, detailed design.
Further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak to the amendment, and I'll make further comments about this petition when we get to substantive debate on the original motion if this amendment doesn't pass. But I think actually this amendment is a perfectly reasonable suggestion, and it's disappointing that the administration is so dismissive of it. When I first saw the draft response, it was this sentence that struck out to me as being particularly concerning, because any reasonable person who reads this, and we're talking about communication just that goes out to the general public, any reasonable person who reads this is going to feel like the council has completely ignored the concerns that they've raised. That language that suggests that this configuration is the preferred design, if either the administration is saying that it is the preferred design, which is outrageous and dangerous and clearly needs to be reconsidered, or the administration is saying that it's not the preferred design and that actually the design might change and we haven't actually locked in a design, in which case why tell cycling groups and the general public that it is the preferred design? There are quite a few other changes I would advise making to the draft response, but I won't go into them now. Suffice to say that I think this administration probably needs to think more carefully about what messages it sends to the public, because when you fail to clearly state that you are open to making further changes and that a design hasn't been locked in, residents feel like they have no choices left in terms of proper processes and then resort to protest. And we saw that with the Victoria Bridge debacle as well, where council did not provide clear information about how the Metro project would impact bike lanes on the bridge itself, and cycling groups then had to organise protests because they felt like they weren't being heard by the administration. So it would be much better to be clear with cycling groups and the broader public that you do intend to change the design if that's the case, rather than saying that this is the preferred design and the safest option, which appears to be the meaning that's conveyed by that particular sentence.
Further speakers to the amendment? There being then councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I rise to sum up the debate on the amendment before us today, and the only debate that I've heard is from the deputy mayor, saying it doesn't change the intent of the petition response and council's actions before us today. So let me be clear on what this council is saying. This is the intention of the deputy mayor as stated by supporting this petition. Safety assessments have determined the current proposed cycling lane arrangement on Melbourne Street is appropriate, and confirm this configuration as the preferred design option for the project. Now, the intent of that statement is black and white. This council's position is, according to the deputy mayor, that the safest and most appropriate configuration is the one that puts the bike lanes in the middle of the bus lanes heading east and west, or north and south, sorry, north and south. That is a clear statement of intent from this council. Now, to me, based on the information I've heard today and my own views on the revised plans I've seen from the Bug, this is not the safest and it is not the most appropriate course of action. So how do we change this? We delete a statement that has clear intent. And that clear intent, the deputy mayor doesn't seem to understand what, I think, the impact of what she is saying. If that statement stays in, it sends a clear message of intent to the following people, the council officers and contractors involved in this project, by saying that this is the safest and most appropriate option. It sends a message of...
Point of order. You may.
Councillor Johnston, take a question?
Councillor, will you take a question?
No.
She declines. Deputy Mayor, councillor Johnston, please continue.
It sends a clear message of intent to the cycling groups that this council does not consider their concerns to be important and isn't willing to change its position in response to the concerns they've raised. It sends a clear message of intent to the residents of Brisbane that this council will not listen when significant and diverse stakeholder groups put forward very genuine arguments. Now, you've got the bus union, you've got the walking lobby group, you've got the cycling lobby groups, did I leave anybody out? You've got them all saying, you've got this wrong. And what does the deputy mayor do? Do stand up for two minutes and say, no, we might consider it, but we might not, and we do think this is the most preferred and the safest option? That's a terrible mixed message that sends the wrong intention to the residents of Brisbane, the completely wrong intention. Now, I've got about another minute or two, but I'm going to say this very genuinely, support this amendment or just abstain and let it go through on our vote, because taking out this sentence does change the intent of our response to everybody. It says clearly to our council officers, design team, contractors, project team, that we no longer consider this to be the safest and most appropriate option. It says to all the groups that have raised concerns here in this place today that we've heard them and we are going to do something about it. And I for one cannot stand coming into this place, week after week, and hearing genuine issues being raised by my community and others, and this LMP administration, week after week, saying, no, we know best, we're going to ignore you, we may or may not change something, and we all know what that means, because this administration's level of consultation is, tell us what you think and then we'll ignore you. That's how they've operated for 12 long years. Well, this is the time to change. This is the time to make sure that we get this right. And today, honestly, I cannot think of a better thing that we could do as a council than actually say to this community, we've heard you, we are going to delete one sentence, which sends a very clear intention to everybody involved in this project, that we have heard you and we are going to look an alternative design. So, Lord Mayor, I urge you to rethink this, and everyone to support the amendment.
All right. I'll put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment, say aye?
Aye!
The country, no?
No!
The noes have it?
Division.
Call councillor Johnston, councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
The noes have it, please return to your chairs. Councillors, we'll now return to the substantive motion. Is there any debate, further debate on the substantive motion before us? Councillor Shree?
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the motion before us, and I, as the councillor whose ward this actually falls within, I'm particularly concerned about the wrong road that the administration might be heading down here. I might take a little moment to explain the context of this area for the interest of other councillors who don't know it so well. The current arrangement under the rail bridge near Melbourne Street is obviously really constrained. You might have walked through there for an event or on your way between buses, it's a really narrow footpath, and we see on a daily basis a lot of conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists and e-scooter users, who are all sharing that very narrow, confined pathway. Now, the, at the moment, we're seeing already a lot of cyclists using Melbourne Street, but with the rise of e-scooters and more electric bikes and a general shift towards active transport, those numbers are predicted to rise further. So we know that a lot more cyclists are going to be using this corridor in the future. The administration got halfway towards acknowledging that when it capitulated to residents' concerns and committed to introducing separated bike lanes on the Victoria Bridge as part of the Metro project. So the administration has essentially acknowledged that the Victoria Bridge and the Melbourne Street corridor is and will remain a very important cyclist corridor into the long term. And yet, so we've got separated bike lanes on that Victoria Bridge, and yet no safe separated bike lanes to get to the Victoria Bridge, according to the current plans that the administration's put forward. Now, one of the justifications presented by the petition response and in the commentary around this issue has been that we don't yet know how many buses will be using this corridor in the future. We expect that because of the Brisbane Metro, there might even be fewer bus routes coming down this part of Melbourne Street. But at the same time, the council administration has been acknowledging in other contexts that actually there will be more high-frequency and high-capacity buses coming, particularly from West End in the future. And we know according to the Labour and the Liberals' plans for the medium term, there's going to be at least an additional 10,000 residents living in that part of the West End Peninsula. So those people aren't all going to be driving to get around, the vast majority of them will hopefully be using active and public transport. That means that actually we might see many more buses coming from West End and coming down Melbourne Street in the future. So that means there'll be more bus routes using that area, and that means more potential conflicts between cyclists who are using narrow on-road bike lanes. For anyone who's following this at home and trying to understand what we're talking about, the council's proposed design for the bike lanes through Melbourne Street has a very narrow strip of green paint between the bus lane and the bus stop. That means every bus that's stopping at that Melbourne Street stop is going to be pulling in across the path of cyclists, and then when the bus has collected and dropped off passengers, it's going to be pulling out again across the path of cyclists. So every bus that stops there is going to be making two movements across the bike lane. So we're likely to have hundreds, perhaps one day thousands, of cyclists using that corridor in peak periods, and similarly dozens and dozens of buses crossing back and forwards across those bike lanes. Anyone who looks at the images can immediately identify that that does not look like a safe option for cyclists. And that's why I was so flabbergasted to read in the petition response the suggestion that safety assessments have determined that the current proposed cycle lane arrangement is appropriate, and that this is the preferred design option for the project. That set alarm bells ringing for me, that was a really concerning statement. To suggest with a straight face that that is the preferred arrangement and that is safe is extremely concerning. Laypeople who have no expertise in transport planning can see that that's not a safe arrangement. I've talked to people who are specialist bikeway designers, and they definitely don't think it's a safe arrangement. You've got bus drivers who don't think it's a safe arrangement, you've got cyclists and local residents, and members of pedestrian advocacy groups who are... local residents and members of walking, pedestrian advocacy groups who also don't think it's a safe arrangement. And what it's likely to mean is that you will have more and more cyclists and more and more e-scooter users sharing a very narrow and congested footpath because they don't feel safe riding in the bike lanes. If you don't provide safe, separated bike lanes that are usable for riders of all ages and abilities, those riders are going to continue to use footpaths and you're going to continue to have complaints from residents who don't feel safe sharing narrow footpaths with riders. So you can't seriously tell the people of Brisbane that this is the preferred arrangement when it clearly shouldn't be. Now, if it's the case that actually the administration is quietly considering changing these plans and there's a lot of stuff still up in the air, my concern is that you're, you're currently not being clear with the public about that, but even more concerningly, you've ruled out and very clearly ruled out other changes to this project. So we've got, we've got a situation where some things are sort of set in stone, but not really set in stone, and then other things are definitely set in stone, and yet the design as a whole is still apparently up for grabs. And I'm, I'm sure the deputy mayor is aware of my previous suggestions around creating a pedestrian wall outside the South Bank train station and creating opportunities for a genuine public open space in that area. It's strange that the administration seems to be willing to rule that great idea out, but at the same time is not, is not being clear about what its plans are with these particular bike lanes. So I'm, again, very, very concerned about this current approach. Reiterate my broader concerns about the procurement and design process of the metro more generally. I think it's been troubling to see that big stakeholders, well-connected institutions and, for want of a better term, elite stakeholders, seem to be getting an inside lane and receiving preferential treatment in the stakeholder consultation process while ordinary residents, while cycling groups, et cetera, are ignored and marginalised. I'm yet to find, and I've, I've talked to a lot of people about this and the comments threads on my Facebook page lit up when I shared it, I'm yet to find a single resident who thinks that the proposed configuration that the LNP have put forward is safe and appropriate. I'm yet to find a single resident who thinks that that is a safe and optimal design for such a busy busway and such a busy cycling corridor. I'd be really interested to know exactly which consultancy or exactly which department in council it is that recommended that, that this is the preferred configuration and that this is safe, because I don't think those people should be giving council advice anymore about what does count as safe. I genuinely would like to hear from the deputy mayor or someone from the opposition to explain where, what that safety assessment was, who conducted that safety assessment, what factors they considered, and whether there was adequate consultation with bus drivers and with cycling groups. Because if an engineering company or some transport consultancy is telling us that that is a safe configuration, we should not be contracting them for their services again. They are clearly providing very bad advice. I'm, as a councillor, obviously strongly opposed to this proposed design and I'm urgently and sincerely asking this administration to reconsider its current position. I don't understand if it's just that you don't want to change your mind because you're concerned you'll lose face, or that you don't want to change your mind because you might look like you're backing down. I don't really understand why logic is not prevailing in this situation. Is there some other political game going on behind the scenes that isn't visible to the general public? Whatever the situation here, I just really urge the administration to reflect deeply on the feedback it's receiving from the public and, and to clarify that you don't intend to proceed with this madness, because the current proposal genuinely is madness. I certainly wouldn't want to see children riding down that bike lane, but that's the standard that we should be designing for. We need to be designing our bike lanes and our bikeways to be safe for children. And I, if, if the mayor or the deputy mayor genuinely believes that this is a safe configuration and that this is the preferred design option for Melbourne Street, I'd, I'd challenge you to stand up and say to the public and say to this chamber that you believe that the proposed bike lanes as shown in the concept design that's been published are safe for children to ride on. And if you don't believe they're safe for children to ride on, then they shouldn't be the preferred design and you should be going back to the drawing board.
Further speakers, councillor Adams or the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. First of all, I'd like to apologise to our traffic network officers, to our transport strategy planners, to our active transport network planners and to the civil engineers that have worked tirelessly on this project over the last two years, from what they just heard from councillor Sri.
Calm down. Deputy Mayor, please continue.
Thank you. I am, again, flabbergasted that we hear from councillor Sri and others that we are not being public about possible changes. I don't know how many more times I could have made it clear in committee this morning, the Lord Mayor stood here and said it again this afternoon, I said it again to Mister Campbell, to the public speaker. I would just like to read, not out of context, which is something that councillor Johnson loves to do, loves to take a sentence out of context, never finishes the paragraph. Safety assessments have determined the current proposed cycle lane arrangements on Melbourne Street is appropriate and confirm this configuration as the preferred design outcome, option for the project. However, do we know what however means? I hope we know what however means. However, further investigation into these lane arrangements can occur as a part of the detailed design and the planning for Brisbane Metro, and council will continue to work with stakeholders through this process to further enhance active transport connectivity with cycling facilities in the CBD. There is no reasonable person, councillor Johnson, through you, Mister Chair, that would think that we are not willing to consider arrangement changes
Point of order.
in the detailed design.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Deputy Mayor, continue.
I wrote it down, word for word, she read the first sentence and it said, no reasonable person would believe that we are willing to look at changes, always. Wouldn't take my question to read the next sentence, because she knew she was caught out. There's very clear there that this is
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Claimed to be misrepresented again.
Yep, yeah, deputy mayor.
Thank you. As the Lord Mayor was trying to explain through his misrepresentation, we did not go out to tender with out the concepts and the designs. This is our reference design case, this is our base case, our base design. Now, goodness help any city of Brisbane that ends up with those people in the opposition or the independents running a project in this council if they don't know how to manage a project simply by having a reference design, working with collaborative partners. We're doing exactly what councillor Sri wants. He doesn't want the officers listened to, he doesn't want us listened to, he wants the experts listened to.
Point of order, Mister Chair. Point of order, councillor Sri.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Deputy Mayor.
And with the detailed design, we've made it very clear that we can then investigate lane arrangements, enhance active transport connectivity, including the cycling facilities. What we have before us today is a petition response saying the safest, most appropriate outcome for this reference design is the one before us in the reference design. Cassidy asked for a clear message, I'm making it clear. Councillor Cassidy, I'm sorry councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy said, I want a clear message. I can't make it any clearer, this is the third time I've said it today. This is a base case reference design that started the conversation, detailed designs will come. I do take the, the point though, that councillor Cassidy said, we didn't do proper consultation with the state. If 276 meetings are not proper consultation, I can tell you, if I contacted my constituents 276 times in 18 months, I think they'd call it harassment. 276 meetings. We went out to consultation with the residents and the cycling groups and we listened, apparently.
Point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Will the deputy mayor take a question?
Deputy Mayor? No, the councillor declines. Deputy Mayor, please continue.
Thank you. And we listened. Councillor Sri calls it capitulation, but we just call it listening to the residents, the cycling groups, and doing the changes that were asked for, as again, I spoke to Mister Campbell about this afternoon. This is the reference-based design. This, by the planners and the experts and the civil engineers, are the advice to me because I am also not a civil engineer, either is councillor Sri, and at least councillor Johnson had the decency to acknowledge that today for the first time. I will take the advice from the experts, that is what the recommendation actually reflects, that this is determined the safest for this reference design. However, detailed design can still look at other enhancements, I support the petition to the chamber.
Now councillor Johnson, you had some items of misrepresentation, as you rightly identified earlier in the meeting, there are limitations to what can be said in this, and I trust that you will adhere to the limitations that you identified for your, for the items.
Yes, yes, and that is that councillor Adams referred to me referring to reasonable people. In this case, a range of reasonable people do not think this is the appropriate course of action, including the CBD bug, walking Queensland, the bus union
Thank you, next point. And the local councillor. You don't need to list, what's the next point?
Yep, well, they're, they're the reasonable people who think this is wrong.
Okay, no, don't debate, what's the next point?
I can't remember, but I'm sure she was wrong.
Okay, all right, I'm sure it wasn't that important then. Councillor Sri.
Point of order, Mister Chair.
So, point of order to you.
I, I just wanted, with the greatest respect, take issue to that throwaway remark you just made, which was expressing a personal opinion about the value of councillor Johnson's comments. I think, it wasn't a big controversial thing, he just said, I'm sure it wasn't that important then, but I think that sort of partiality should be avoided from the chair.
Okay, all right, everyone, everybody stop. Everyone calm down. Now councillor Sri, you had a misrepresentation earlier this meeting, you also took an opportunity to try and remind me what the rules are, I trust therefore you know them and you'll stick to them yourself. Please go ahead.
Sure, the deputy mayor seemed to suggest that I wasn't supportive of taking advice from experts, I just want to clarify that I am supporting, supportive of taking advice from experts. My concern is that we are not relying on well-qualified experts.
All right, further debate. There being, no one rising their feet, councillor Davis, do you have anything further? I will now put the resolution, which is item C of the report that was distributed earlier today. All those in favour of the report, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Divided by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Eyes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 7 against.
Excuse me, the ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, we now begin question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mister Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today the deputy mayor, mayor and you announced an exciting addition to our City Cat fleet, the first double-decker City Cat. Can you outline how this administration is getting on with delivering for the people of Brisbane and giving residents more travel options?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the, for the question councillor Huang, and it is an exciting day today because the new, brand-new double-decker City Cat is on the water. It was great to be out there this morning to have a look. The vessel was craned into the water from the manufacturing facility at Murray Ree and is, it literally took four hours to crane it from the facility into the water, and testing has commenced on this brand-new, new generation double-decker City Cat. So it's an exciting day and we're now around a month away from this vessel entering service. We have seven days of testing that is underway right now, and then following the successful completion of that testing, we will have 20 days of training of the crew and staff on the City Cat to make sure they are familiar with the new vessel, and then the vessel can go into service around the middle of next month. So it's a very exciting time. And it's interesting, we've been talking today about tender processes and unfortunately Labour councillors and also independent councillors don't seem to understand that you don't go out to the market with a fully designed project. You go out and you seek design and construction services, and this vessel was an example of that. We didn't design this City Cat, it was designed by boatbuilding experts. But I remember that day, and it was a little over two years ago, when I had a discussion as the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee about the next generation of City Cats. And we sat in a meeting with the officers and they were talking about moving out to tender for the new design. And it was at that meeting where, based on discussions with my colleagues, I asked the officers to request, as an option, a double-decker City Cat. The design option was put out to tender, we went out to tender with a single deck option, a four-edge single deck option and a double deck option. The winning tenderer and the winning bidder that has constructed the first vessel was a local company, Oz Ships, based here in Murray Ree, employing local people. It was designed here and it has been built here and it's just fantastic to see. This is literally cutting-edge catamaran technology developed and built here in Brisbane, now on the water, soon ready to go into service to benefit the people of Brisbane. So it is really exciting. It is fantastic that the boat also comes with a whole range of improvements for passengers. One of the most important is extra accessibility and space for people with wheelchairs. Now, the current specs of the vessel is that there should be at least six wheelchair spaces. However, I was out there today and a trial was conducted and it is more likely that this vessel can take up to eight wheelchairs, which is great. There is also more room for bicycles, people with bicycles, and there's dedicated bicycle parking at the rear of the vessel. But one of the fantastic accessibility initiatives here is that at the point where the wheelchair parking is, dedicated wheelchair parking, the boat is deliberately designed so that the windows go all the way down to the floor, and so people in a wheelchair can literally have basically floor-to-ceiling windows, getting the best possible view of the river. So it is just, it's one of those, it's one of those small things that makes a real difference. There's also a whole range of features like USB charging ports, free wifi, there is even the opportunity to charter this vessel out for corporate Christmas parties or community Christmas parties, and there is a bar, there is a bar, there is a specially-designed ticket box which can be easily converted into a bar. So it's just a fantastic addition, I was so excited to be out there. And the great news is that this vessel is the first of seven double-decker City Cats that we're putting on the river. And in the budget earlier this year, I put forward the funding for the additional six City Cats and we will progressively be rolling them out on the river. Once again, built locally, designed locally, employing local people. We have at least 30 jobs that have been involved, local jobs that have been created and involved in this project, and that number will increase as the new vessels start being constructed. So it's a fantastic outcome. We have some of the world's best boatbuilders here in Brisbane
Lord Mayor.
and it's great that council can support them and work with them.
Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Councillor Adams, the opposition has received disturbing reports that the new generation City Cats will not feature the shaft brake that dramatically shortens the stopping distance in case of emergency. The opposition has also been told these brakes have been fitted to every City Cat in the fleet, however, were not included in the specifications your council issued for new City Cats. Will the new City Cats be fitted with a similar emergency brake? Or can you assure passengers and other river users that the new boats will either have the same or shorter stopping distance than the present fleet?
Lord Mayor.
I'm happy to take this question as I was the Chair when the contract was awarded for this vessel. What I can tell you is that all of the safety features in this boat will either meet or exceed the safety features in the existing fleet. All of them. This will be a safer and a better vessel in every way. What I can also say is that we are testing new technology on this boat to make it even safer. And there's a range of systems that are being tested. And I can say this boat will not enter service unless it meets the absolute strictest and most stringent safety requirements. Now, what I can see here is another Labour opportunity to throw a little bit of mud at what is a positive initiative for Brisbane, for Brisbane residents, for Brisbane jobs and for the incredible Brisbane company that has been involved in designing and building this vessel. The safety features will either meet or exceed all of the existing safety features in City Cats. And what's more, the seven day period right now is all about putting the vessel through trials to make sure it meets every single safety standard that it needs to meet. This is not something we take lightly, but it's also not something that the opposition should try and play politics with. Because that is exactly what is happening here. There is no issue with safety of this vessel. And ultimately, as I said, this testing process will mean that the vessel will not go into service unless it is absolutely meeting the highest relevant and necessary safety standard.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, as the Lord Mayor has previously promised, he remains committed to releasing the full standing load data every month. I understand that the September data is now available. Can you please update the chamber on Brisbane's worst bus routes? And how does the Brisbane Metro help fix the problem of full standing loads?
Thank you, Mrs Chair. Can I thank councillor Shrinna, the former Chair of Public and Active Transport and our Lord Mayor for answering the previous question? And it's interesting, since we talked about full standing busloads last week, the interest we've had from other peak bodies about those statistics. In particularly, the RACQ have come to the support of council in our bid to ensure that we are open and transparent. And that's what residents want. They want to know that we're getting on with it. The team Shrinna is focused on public transport and getting on with the job of the delivery it. Because we know what would happen if we left openness and transparency to the Palashay government. This is probably what you'd get, if anything, when it came to full standing busloads. Because we know when it comes to right to know, Minister Bailey does not want you to know. The Minister Bailey does not want you to know the full standing busloads. And I don't blame them, they are appalling. This is a problem that affects residents. And as I've previously said, people want to know what we are doing about fixing it. And as I said last week, and the Lord Mayor's promised today, I can report on September's data to the chamber about our full standing busloads. Last month, there are a total of 2,039 full standing loads. That is 510 busloads a week. An increase of 133 on September last year. The problem is only getting worse. Importantly, 65% of the busloads were during peak hours. But that's still a 35% that occurred during off peak. So it's not just daily work commuters who are copping the brunt of the problem. It's shift workers, it's school kids, it's carers, it's anyone travelling in Brisbane during the day. And the Transport Minister not only doesn't want you to know about it, he gives it the tick of approval, continue on. What we do know is the worst route. The worst route in Brisbane continues to be Route 66. Route 66 from the Royal Brisbane Hospital to UQ, 248 full standing loads this month. That is 50 services a weekday that are not picking people up on Route 66. And what is the most disappointing part of this is the fact that our metro service directly replaces that route. Our turn up and go metro service that will go from UQ to the Royal Brisbane Hospital will fix this issue. Not only does the bus turn up more regularly, but a normal bus, 65 passengers, a metro vehicle, 150. So more often and more capacity. People just want to get, oh, I'll take the interjection from councillor Camming. It's going to be a cattle truck. Wonder how that would have worked on the tram running down the backwards direction in Brunswick Street on a metal train line. 50 services a day are already jam full and leaving people behind. The Brisbane Metro is funded. We have a team, as I mentioned before, of planners and civil engineers and transport network officers and active transport network officers, making sure they are dedicated to getting it built. But we have a state government who are doing everything possible to make sure that we don't get there. We will continue the pressure. As the Lord Mayor said, Minister Bailey will not meet with the Chair of Public and Active Transport. A great collaborative start for the people of Brisbane, they must be so proud. Why not? Well, that's a question I'll be asking the integrity commissioner. He's refusing to respond to my letters and he won't sign off on the early works. He's literally doing the opposite of what his job requires of him to do. But what are the other opportunities that we have from the metro? Services 130 from Eldeston to the city, 71 full standing loads last month will benefit. When we truncate services, there'll be more services out to the suburbs. Aspley to the city, 58 full loads. Brackenridge to the city, 45 full loads. Forest Lake to the city, one of the ones we'll be discussing in a petition later today, 82 full loads. Unfortunately, we don't expect the minister to give us any approvals before March. He has agreed for me to accompany the Lord Mayor to a meeting in a couple of weeks' time. Where hopefully, now that we've cracked the 300 meeting mark, we might be able to get some decisions from the minister. But I'm not holding my breath. Meanwhile, we will continue to campaign hard for Brisbane Metro and show residents that team Shrinna can deliver public and active transport to get them home quicker and safer.
Your time has expired, further speak, further. Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on page 273 of this year's annual report, it details transactions your council has made with related parties such as the $70,000 paid to councillor Mackay, which is the subject of a referral to the Crime and Corruption Commission. The annual report states, a company controlled by a councillor or member of the executive management team was paid by council to provide design, data processing, print and mail services to council's Greenheart City Smart Company. Could you advise who that councillor or senior manager was? The nature of the work involved and the cost to council? And what arms length process was used to award these contracts?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Cassidy. And true to form, he's dishing the dirt again. Digging the dirt, throwing mud, throwing mud. And it's interesting because it's so secret that it's in the annual report. It's so secret that it is there for anyone to see. And that annual report is on the website for any member of the public to see.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
The Lord Mayor is misleading the chamber. The question was, who was the councillor or the manager? And that is not included in the annual report.
I can tell councillor Cassidy that every councillor has an obligation to declare to the CEO these matters and to fill in the appropriate paperwork. And I am confident that councillors have done that. And so I expect councillors in this team to make appropriate declarations, to follow the law. And I can tell you, we pride ourselves in doing the right thing. Unlike Labour politicians who buy houses right next to major projects and have government contracts relating to legal services.
All right, councillors, can you please, as I've said, some interjections are tolerated, but the same one over and over and over is not. So please keep your interjections limited, Lord Mayor.
And the fact that this matter is being reported in the annual report would indicate to anyone that the appropriate declarations have been made. So councillor Cassidy, you can try and fish around all you like to manufacture some kind of issue. And we know that that is what he does. He manufactures issue, he tries to throw mud, he tries to get personal, he tries to imply something improper has happened without any proof just by asking these subtly, in, what's the word? Questions full of innuendo without any kind of fact or evidence. And so, as I would say simply, the appropriate declarations have been made, which is why they are reported in the annual report. And so councillor Cassidy, you can ask again and again and you will get the same answer, which is the appropriate declarations have been made. The appropriate declarations have been made. So councillor Cassidy, keep trying to throw mud, keep trying to dig the dirt. You will get nowhere. Because as councillor Mark said, the more dirt you dig, the more ground you lose. And that is very much the case. And Labour has not learned the lessons of the past. I remember very clearly, probably one of the most disgraceful Labour campaigns I've ever seen, when they manufactured the Campbell's Web ads. Remember that? Remember that? And then just before the election, had to admit that there was no evidence whatsoever.
Lord Mayor, there is a point of order to councillor Cassidy.
There's a number of things going on here. One, relevance, Chair. But second, the Lord Mayor is required under meetings local law to answer the question. The question was very clear. Who was the key management personnel that received this money? And what process, what at arms length process was in place? It's a very, very simple question, I don't understand why he can't answer it.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I draw your attention to the question. You have two minutes and 15 seconds.
I'm not sure whether councillor Cassidy is deliberately misunderstanding the requirements here or whether he just doesn't understand the requirements here. There is no requirement for anyone to report anything to me. There is a requirement to report through the official council processes. So a council is not going to come to me and say, oh, oh, Lord Mayor, I'm just giving you the heads up. No, they fill in the appropriate paperwork, it goes to the CEO like it should and it's reported in the annual report. So that process has quite clearly been followed. And so I don't know about related transactions. I don't know the answer to that question because it's been dealt with through the CEO's office and that is the appropriate way it should be dealt with. And I would say, in that question, there was a very misleading statement and inaccurate statement made before, which suggested that a particular councillor had been paid directly for council services. That is not the case. That is not the case. That is not the case. And so, like I said, I don't know if councillor Cassidy is deliberately misunderstanding here or it's just part of his strategy to dish the dirt, to throw mud, to make personal innuendo claims that have no basis in truth. I will say again for a final time, the fact that it is in the annual report would suggest to anyone that the process has been followed. You know why people tend to get in trouble? Because they don't make the declarations. Not because they do make the declarations. The problems that we've had, like with the deputy premier, is because they don't make the declarations. So when councillor Cassidy looks in the report and says, oh, someone's made a declaration, what's the issue? The appropriate process is quite clearly been followed here. And that is the right thing to do. And as I've said, I don't know who it is because the declaration was not made to me, it was made to the CEO.
Further questions, councillor Richards.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, in the coming weeks, council will open another two brand new parks. The Milton Urban Common in Milton and a new park in Ascot. Can you outline for the chamber how the Shrinna administration is getting on with creating a clean and green Brisbane?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you so much for the question councillor Richards. And I'm so glad that I sit on this side of the chamber with our wonderful leader, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna. Because we have a vision. Unlike that side who is scraping through the mud piles, who have no vision for this city, we certainly have a vision about delivering parks and green space for this great city of ours. Mr Chair, we have some, two amazing parks coming on board to join our already 2,100 parks across our city. The first one is the new park for Ascot. And I know councillor McLaughlin can't wait to open this park on Sunday, the 3rd of November. And councillor McLaughlin, I can't wait to join you at this beautiful new park at Ascot. The project delivered a park that increased accessibility, shady green space, celebrates the suburb's rich heritage and includes features of the old Ascot Park from the 1930s and encourages recreational activity in our wonderful subtropical climate. Let us not forget, this used to be a car park. And we are turning, or this administration, under the stewardship of Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and councillor McLaughlin, your Chair at the time, we have turned this into a beautiful space which has a bandstand, a new shaded and fully fenced playground incorporating all abilities access to play elements, including swings, spinning, climbing, sentry and water play, the rejuvenation of the park including turf, tree planting, which is extremely important, and a new post and rail fence. Now, this new post and rail fence is a historical aspect and brings us back to how things used to be in yesteryear. The construction of entries, pathways and lightings, barbecue, picnic settings and seedings, an accessible toilet block and of course, a new dog off leash area. And again, councillor McLaughlin, I encourage anyone of residents around the north side, especially of Brisbane, but as I said last week, the residents, there is no boundaries. Residents don't define themselves on electoral boundaries. So anyone is welcome to come on and enjoy this beautiful park at Ascot and especially the opening on the 3rd of November. 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock, there you go. Councillor Maddick is also hosting an event and opening his new park at the Milton Urban Common on Saturday, the 2nd of November. So it's a great weekend for our parks across our city. The Milton Urban Common project has created a new recreational green space and a place to promote a sense of community in the suburb. The works have provided a space for a variety of users, including green shady spots to have lunch and a grassy area for picnics and recreational activities. But this is just the beginning. We are dedicated on this side to deliver more parks across our city with 11 more parks coming on board with their new or existing upgrades in Combsley Recreational Reserve, Grinstead Park, Orderley, Shan Street Park, Stafford, Corbett Park, Inogra, Capera Bushland Reserve, Capera, Wembley Park, Cooperoo, Wishard Community Park, Wishard, Chalk Street Park, which is an amazing new park coming on board at Lutwich, Mount Cravat, Lookout Reserve, Mount Cravat and Stephen Mountains Reserve, Greenslopes and Eldon Hill Reserve, Windsor. We are looking, this.
The answer will be heard in silence.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Again, I look forward to seeing all these new parks deliver, deliver it for our city and for our residents. And this really is making Brisbane even brisbetter. Thank you.
Further speakers, or further questions I should say, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, if Brisbane City Council can provide public land for uses such as function venues, rowing clubs, golf courses, et cetera, why can't Brisbane City Council provide more land for public housing and community housing projects?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question. And certainly, the role of council is not to provide our land to build housing developments of any kind. That is not the core role. But certainly, in a number of our parks, there are facilities that are in demand by the community. the community, that are considered to be publicly open and publicly available facilities, where it is appropriate to have a third-party operator. And so ultimately, one of the things that councillor Shree doesn't understand or doesn't agree with is that there is a role for private operators in running our city more efficiently, because he sees everyone that's in business as a greedy corporate who's just wanting to profiteer of people.
Mr Chair.
A point of order, councillor Shree.
Did I say something that you don't agree with?
I am to be misrepresented.
Noted.
But we see operators, third-party operators, as a way of providing services more effectively and efficiently in a number of cases. And there's time and time again examples of where someone can come in and run a facility or a service for us more effectively and more cost-effectively than council could do it if we did it ourselves. And so there will always be a role in certain circumstances for private operators to run public facilities, and so whether it's a golf course, or whether it's a function centre...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
On relevance, the question was about whether council would give land for non-profit housing, it wasn't?
Yes, I understand that, and I think that, look, I find the answer to be on topic. The, Lord Mayor, you have three minutes and 25 seconds remaining.
Thank you. And that question, as a direct example, was asked in reference to the fact that councillor Shree claimed that land is provided to commercial operators. Well, we don't provide land to commercial operators, we ask them to operate our facilities, we may provide a lease to them, but those facilities remain council facilities. We don't give commercial operators land. There is a return for the council and the ratepayers of Brisbane. And so, in the case of a sporting club, yes, someone may operate that, but yes, that sporting club usually invests a lot of money, non-council money, into upgrading the facilities as well. So I don't think the example that he used is actually a fair or legitimate one, because it implies that we're just giving land away to someone for nothing in return. That is not the case. So in relation to housing, the largest stock of land that we have is parkland. The second largest stock of land that we have is road reserve, and roads that people actually drive on or cycle on or walk on every day. So there's not some magic bank of land that we have that can suddenly be given up to developers to build housing. And even if it might be low-cost or affordable housing, that would require us giving up parkland for housing to be built, or it would require us to close down roads for housing to be built, because that is a vast majority of our landholding across the city. Or it might require bushland being given over to developers to build housing. This is not something...
Point of order, Mr Chair, councillor Shree.
I think the Lord Mayor has missedly in the chamber, there's plenty of other assets that council owns other than parkland and road reserves.
Oh, I don't think so, I disagree. And I think the answer is largely on the point that you've asked about as well. Lord Mayor, you've got one minute and 36 seconds to go.
Thank you. I've made it clear, the vast majority of land that we own is parkland. That is a fact, this is not something I'm making up. The vast majority of land we own is parkland, followed by roads. These are, if you look in the council's finances, at the assets, at the billions of dollars worth of assets that we hold, the majority is parkland or roads. That's the reality. So I don't think it's appropriate to be giving over parkland for developers to build housing. I don't think it's appropriate at all. And if councillor Shree is aware of some mysterious stash of land that we have available that's not doing anything, then I'd be keen to see it, because I'm sure there's a better use for it. Maybe that use is not housing, but certainly, I don't think the question is really getting to the, or is really making an accurate comparison between allowing community groups and sporting clubs to manage land for us, to invest in facilities, or for private operators to help run facilities for us. We're not giving them the land, just like we won't be giving away parkland for developers to build housing.
Further que, oh, excuse me, councillor Shree, you had a misrepresentation.
Thanks, Mr Chair. The message appeared to suggest I was against all business, which definitely isn't the case, and I want to clarify that, and I also just wanted to clarify the fact that I'm definitely not suggesting we give away parking, give away parkland for housing, but every time I've raised with the mayor, the availability of underused council land, they sell it off to the private sector, and that gives me some concern.
All right, further questions? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Field Services Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, council's Cleaner Suburbs Awards champion, the achievements of residents and groups who work to keep Brisbane a clean and green city. Can you please update the chamber on the winners of the awards held at City Hall last week?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Marks for the question, and I also thank her for representing me at the awards. I unfortunately had to attend the funeral of a much-loved local resident. This administration is committed to creating a clean and green Brisbane, and we are fortunate to represent the dedicated residents of this city who are passionate about protecting and enhancing the beautiful environment that we enjoy here in Brisbane. So last week, Brisbane's Green Army of Schools, community groups and individuals were recognised by the Lord Mayor for their environmental efforts at our annual Cleaner Suburbs Awards. The Cleaner Suburbs Awards championed the achievements of our dedicated residents and community groups that go above and beyond in their commitment to protecting our environment and creating a clean and green city. This year, we received nominations from over 180 residents and community groups. We are proud of each and every entrant for contributing towards a cleaner, greener and better Brisbane. We had an incredible group of nominations this year, and I'm told it was no easy task to narrow it down to our 26 exceptional finalists. From waste reduction, organising a Local Cleanup Australia Day, or helping protect our 4,000 kilometres of local waterway corridors. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who nominated, and offer on behalf of council, a special congratulations to our finalists, and in particular, our 11 winners who were awarded for their efforts last week. All of our winners really did go above and beyond, from young Ned Heaton, who founded his own company aged just 11, to help people make the switch from single-use plastics, to Sophie Rutter, who has helped to prevent 860,000 single-use plastic items being used on University of Queensland campuses. The Green Brook Association won the 2019 councillors' Green, Clean Green Choice Award for their hard work in Grange Forest Park to regenerate native bushland. They seek to create a self-sustaining ecology of native plants and animals within the suburb. And of course, the Litter Prevention Award for the individual categories of ages five to 17 went to the talented Ned Heaton, for reducing ocean plastics and plastic litter by selling and giving away bamboo toothbrushes while educating people about plastic pollution. At just 11 years of age, Ned founded his own company called The Turtle Tribe to help people to make the switch away from plastics. The Litter Prevention Award for the individual 18-plus category was awarded to Sophie Rutter, who was the driving force behind UQ Unwrapped, and as I mentioned, has done an incredible job to help prevent over 800,000 pieces of plastic from being used on UQ campuses. The Group Litter Prevention Award went to two well-deserved recipients, the Calumvale College P&amp;C Association for their hard work in developing a new recycling scheme at the college by establishing a bulk retrieval and collection service for recycled products, which was realised approximately, has realised approximately 60,000 returns. The second award to, for the Group Litter Prevention Award went to the Tengaluma Eco-Marines, who do the most amazing work running litter cleanups throughout the year for over 36 Brisbane schools, as well as businesses, and at Cleanup Australia Day. This work is helping to reduce the amount of plastics and debris polluting our land, waterways and Moreton Bay, to protect our marine and wildlife. The Clean Away Waste Innovation Award went to Renee McBrien, who designed and delivered community gardens, drove recycling segregation and staff education across 16 healthcare facilities. Her work has prevented over 1 million plastic units from heading to landfill each year. Brisbane's Clean Green Award went to the food waste superhero, Oz Harvest. Oz Harvest is a food rescue organisation with a driving purpose to nourish our country. It began with a simple concept to rescue good food that would otherwise go to waste and deliver it to the people in need. And it currently delivers to directly more than 120 local charities in Brisbane, including school breakfast programmes, domestic violence shelters, emergency food relief programmes, youth groups and street vans. One of my favourite awards is the Clean Schools Award, which celebrates the work of Brisbane's young achievers. This year, the primary school category was awarded to the year five and six students of the Yorongas State School Green Team, who meet every week to brainstorm, plan and establish initiatives to help make their school more sustainable. So far, they have established Clean Up Your School Day, Food Day.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired.
What a shame. Congratulations to all the winners.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on page 273 of this year's annual report, it states that a company controlled by a close family member of a councillor or member of your executive management team was paid by council to provide venue fit-out services to council's Brisbane powerhouse. Could you please advise who that councillor or senior manager was, exactly what the nature of the work involved was, and what was the cost to council, and what process was used to award these contracts? Or don't you care how this money was spent either?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the mudslinging question, councillor Cassidy. It's all he's got, got nothing, absolutely no idea for Brisbane, and he's got a lot of dirt and innuendo-filled questions. But what I can say is this, these procurement decisions that have been made have been made appropriately, with the appropriate processes, and the appropriate declarations have been made. And once again, he's referring to something that's been reported on in the annual report. And like I said, the issue is when people don't make the appropriate declarations, not when people do make the appropriate declarations. So you can't have it both ways, councillor Cassidy. The integrity scandals that we've seen up in George Street have been all about people failing to declare things, failing to fill in the appropriate forms and make the appropriate declarations. We have the opposite happening here, where our councillors are quite obviously proactively declaring these things, as they should. And here's the thing, making a declaration is no indication that somehow anything wrong has occurred, it's simply being upfront, following the law and following appropriate processes. And what councillor Cassidy is trying to do is suggest that somehow something wrong has occurred here. If you've got any evidence that something wrong has occurred, don't come into the council chamber and throw mud, make the appropriate complaints, make the appropriate complaints. And I think it is irrelevant who it was, and once again, I don't know who it was, is it relevant who it was? If there is any evidence that something wrong has happened here, then you should absolutely make the appropriate complaint, rather than trying to score some political points here, trying to smear reputations and throw mud, because there is a way to deal with these things. On our side of the chamber, we make the appropriate declarations, and we really do bend over backwards to make sure everyone is doing the right thing. And the reporting in the annual report is evidence that that is occurring. Now, there are cases where some people make mistakes, I get that, but the mistake here is more likely to be a failure to declare, rather than declaration like we've had here. And so councillor Cassidy, I don't know who it is, and in these procurement processes, I don't recall, for one, these being discussed in any kind of procurement process that I've been involved with. In all likelihood, if it's at the Brisbane powerhouse, then it's been dealt with through their own separate procurement process. So, look, I don't know. I don't know the answer to the question, but what I do know is that our councillors have done the right thing here, and it would be nice if the Labour Party, rather than throwing mud, should realise the irony of the fact that, you know, the party of Jackie Trad, the party of Peter Russo are trying to suggest that the LNP has done something wrong by making declarations that are appropriate. So they have no credibility, they have no ideas and no vision for the city, and all they do is get up here, week after week, and come down to these kind of grubby little issues where they're suggesting that something is wrong, but guess what? Guess, guess what? If there is anything wrong, if, if there is anything wrong and you have any evidence that something wrong has occurred, refer it to the appropriate authorities. Don't come in here with your petty little point-scoring questions with your small-minded team, with no agenda or no vision for the city. Go and waste someone else's time until you come up with a vision and a policy for Brisbane.
Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Matic. Councillor Matic, the Museum of Brisbane's newest exhibition dives into the history, stories and songs of Brisbane's music scene. Can you give the chamber an insight into this exciting exhibition and details on how residents and visitors can go along for themselves?
Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Mackay for the question. My answer, my response is rock on. So, Mr Chairman, it's with great pleasure that I'm able to speak to this event, and I know that you were at the opening of it as well. This amazing snapshot of Brisbane's popular music culture from 1989 to 2019 was another great representation from the Museum of Brisbane that captures the very essence of what our city is about over that 30-year period of music. There is so much within that exhibition to be able to enjoy and reminisce about, and it's great to see too. Sometimes you forget the breadth of the talent that has come from our city, such as bands as Savage Garden, for example, and the success that they've had nationally and internationally, and what great representations they are for our city, and that includes the Veronicas. There'll be a number of different bands that people come to mind that show what the breadth of talent is here. Now, the presentation is broken up into sections throughout the museum, and focuses on all the different aspects of our musical history and culture. It looks at the, the, the music itself, the inspiration by some of our artists, and the background to where their songs came from, from the, from the suburbs, from their experiences. It also goes into the area of looking at memorabilia. It's not a rock exhibition without memorabilia, and there are some amazing pieces of local memorabilia there for people to see and enjoy. It then looks at the places and the venues, that many of which no longer exist, that were great places for people to meet and be able to experience music. It then also provides the opportunity for everyone coming there to create their own music, and there is a separate space within the facility that has been set up for people to play different types of instruments, create different kinds of digital sounds, to create their own type of, of rock feeling. But these, what's important about this is that it also focuses on a lot of the independent stars of that period that came up as emerging artists, and it's great to see that the museum is also recognising their great contribution. There are a lot of different experiences that you can have throughout the period that the, that the museum is showing this, and there are, for example, exhibition tours. So every Wednesday during the exhibition at 12:30pm, the high-rotation exhibition, there is a team that will take you on a tour of Brisbane's vibrant music scene over the past 30 years, from the local underground scene to the dazzling lights, the global stage, finding out how esteemed musicians ended up, ended up coming through their talent and being able to express it everywhere across our city. We also have the insiders tour, so there are a lot of different music critics over the, over the years that have very kindly donated their time to the opportunity to have different forums, so that they can talk about their own experiences, when they saw these shows, the, the interviews that they had, the critiques that they provided, but their own, own personal insights, because we have so many passionate music journalists within our city, but there are also industry stalwarts that will be able to provide their feedback as well. And I think that's an important, unique opportunity for people coming to the exhibition, that it's not just what you see but how you feel, and having that insight of those people that... And having that insight of those people that have been there some for 30 years gives an insight into the Brisbane of the past. There's also the, a fanzine project that they're, they're working on about, because fanzines were a staple of, of being able to get the word out about how, what shows were on, different underground artists. And so for many of these, these were handmade publications done by people purely for love. And so there, there'll be a contribution or an ability, an opportunity for people to contribute their own thoughts and feelings to this fanzine that they'll be creating. There's also a Writers' Festival which will give many aspiring artists the opportunity to talk to many of our gifted musicians and storytellers about their, their own experiences, but also to get ideas about how to improve their, their craft and what the motivations and inspirations were for them. And there's also a leather customisation workshop for, for those that have still got their old leather jackets sitting in the cupboard. If you want to kind of spruce them up a bit, there's an opportunity for that as, as well. All of these things will be running throughout all of this period and it just goes to show the breadth.
councillor Matic, disappointingly, your time has expired.
Thank you Mr Chair.
And that concludes question time.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I seek leave to move an urgency motion in order to enable me to move an urgency motion that council undertakes a comprehensive audit to ensure all of Brisbane's pre-character, pre-1946 homes are identified and protected under the Traditional Building Overlay Code and takes all steps necessary to amend City Plan 2014 accordingly.
Okay.
Seconded.
That is a pretty complicated motion, do you have that in writing? All right, would you mind making that available to one of the attendants? So thank you to councillor Shree. Now, I have a, it's an urgency motion, thank you, thank you councillor Shree. I have an urgency motion that's been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Now councillor Johnston, three minutes please to urgency.
Yes, Mr Chairman, thank you. I'm moving this urgency motion today because this council continues to oversee the loss of character homes within my ward and around the city because they are not mapped, identified and protected within the pre-1946 character overlay. Those homes are subject to demolition without any approval or public notification needed. This is happening on a regular basis in my ward because council has consistently refused to protect character homes. My requests for temporary local planning instruments have also gone unanswered for these homes. It's come to my attention, another property in Borden Street at Sherwood, a gracious pre-1946 home, which is one house out of the mapped overlay but is a distinguished character home, is at risk of demolition. I cannot stand by in good conscience and watch these gracious pre-1946 homes and in some cases in my ward, turn-of-the-century homes, that's homes from the late 1800s and early 1900s that are being lost, they are not being mapped in this city. I've moved this motion on several occasions in the past and it, it, it's not fair that the LNP administration will cherry pick to protect houses in LNP wards and then fails to protect them consistently across the city. So the urgency motion today seeks to ensure that all pre-1946 homes are identified and protected before any others are lost in our city and I urge all councillors to support the urgency motion.
Thank you. Now, I will now put the resolution on the matter of urgency. All those who favour urgency, say aye. To the contrary, no. The nos have it.
Division.
Division's called by councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths, ayes to my right, nos to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the nos have it, the voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
The nos have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, we move to the reports. Firstly, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report please, Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 14th of October 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday the 14th of October be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
Yes. First of all, I wanted to touch on two issues that came up earlier in the meeting. First of all, the one that was raised by councillor Johnston just now. Councillor Johnston is deliberately misrepresenting the facts on this issue. If she is aware of any character houses that should be listed that aren't, she has a responsibility to report them through to tell us and we will get them investigated. That has always been the case. No, we, we don't say no. We don't say no. Councillor Johnston thinks she's the expert on every issue and now she's an expert in character houses as well. But the reality is, if she's aware of any, report them through and we will get them urgently assessed. There is an ongoing process of assessing character houses across the city. It is an ongoing audit that is occurring, which is why regularly in this place, changes are made to the mapping and to the designation of character houses. It is an ongoing thing. So to suggest that somehow it's not being done and there needs to be an urgent review is misleading because it's already underway and it's a continuing process. And councillor Johnston is just being lazy by not actually referring through matters that she believes need to be assessed.
Councillor Johnston, you've made the same interjection five times in a row. You've made your point, Lord Mayor.
Other councillors actually do the right thing. If they're aware of houses that they believe should be listed, that aren't, they refer them through. Councillor Johnston just wants to make it someone else's problem for political reasons. So do your job councillor Johnston. The second issue I wanted to address is the question that councillor Cassidy asked about the City Cat Emergency Braking System. Now, the, I have some more information on this and I'm delighted to report to the chamber the facts of the situation here. Now, many years ago, in the mid 2000s, the City Cats had a different engine and a different gearbox. So it was an older engine and an older gearbox. With the older engine and the old gearbox, in certain situations, the engine would stall where you went from full power to full reverse. So if there was some kind of emergency on the river or if you were approaching another vessel or a rower and you needed to really quickly stop, you would go from full power back to reverse, full reverse. And in certain circumstances, the engine would stall. Now, obviously that's not an ideal situation because the forward momentum would continue on. Since then, we have replaced all of the engines and all of the gearboxes. And the new engines and the new gearboxes do not have this same issue. So they now have an electronic gearbox and when you go from full power to full reverse, you don't have that same issue of the engine stalling. So what councillor Cassidy is talking about is an outdated engine and an outdated gearbox and a temporary fix for that outdated engine and gearbox which is no longer required. So the current engine and gearbox can go from full power to full reverse without stalling and so it is now a very safe system. And that quick fix or temporary fix that we had before is not required. So as I was pointing out before, these vessels have all the latest safety technology and we will not allow them to go into service unless they are absolutely certified to be safe, not only by council but by the appropriate maritime authorities as well. So I'm looking forward to these vessels going through their testing and making sure that we can provide a fantastic vessel and a fantastic service to Brisbane residents, not only to keep them safe on the water but also other vessels using the Brisbane River. And I know these vessels will provide, will, will become such an asset for the city. They will be a fantastic asset with the latest technology and they'll be safer than ever before.
Further speaking? Yeah.
That was my, that was my mistake, I heard the clocks ring and I thought time, yeah, time was up but.
No, no, no.
Moving on, with your indulgence, Mr Chair. So before us, we have a number of items and I will move through. Okay, I'm just looking for my notes here. No, I can't find my notes, Mr Chair, let's just bear with me for a second. Okay, here we go. Item A is the major amendment to City Plan, package G. The purpose of this major amendment is to encourage more of the fantastic rooftop gardens that we have seen popping up around Brisbane. And it is just a great thing to see the tops of buildings which were previously unused areas just for plant and equipment now becoming new recreational areas for residents of the buildings to provide new green space and often in many cases, pool facilities on the top of buildings that help take advantage of Brisbane's incredible lifestyle and climate. And so we were aware that one of the issues here is that by activating rooftop, in certain circumstances, it was defined to be an extra storey. Although there were no apartments being provided on that top level and it was just simply a, a space available for residents. And we had the perverse situation where if a building constructor or developer wanted to provide, you know, shade facilities on top of that building, it would be determined to be an extra storey. And that would then potentially bring their building from code accessible to impact accessible, open them up to challenges because of the extra storey and people in the community would say, oh, well, the plan says 10 stories but you've got 11 stories here, when the intent was not to build extra apartments but to provide a great outcome on the rooftop. So these changes will help facilitate good outcomes with the activation of rooftops, providing facilities. And provided they meet our guidelines, it won't qualify as an extra storey, which I think is fair and reasonable because this is not about increasing development yield, this is about providing a quality outcome for the residents living in that building and their visitors and family and friends that come to visit. So generally speaking, a minimum of 15% of the rooftop or 0.75 times the footprint of the roof, rooftop structure, whichever is greater, would need to include green landscaping. So not only do we want to see artificial shade like shade sails or roofing structures, we also want to see greenery up there on the rooftops as well. So some landscaping on top. Also, rooftop structures with solid roofs are limited to 30% of the rooftop area and have setback requirements as well. And this is designed to make sure that the visual impact of these things is managed and so that residents get the shade that they need, there's the greenery that they need, without having the structures being too imposing. So obviously, this is something that we are very proud of and will help deliver better development outcomes and we look forward to this amendment proceeding. Item B is the major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan, package B, which relates to biodiversity overlay mapping in the city plan. The amended mapping also reflects the updated Queensland Government legislation and refines the subcategories of biodiversity overlay for the effectiveness of and clarity of interpretation. Obviously, we are committed as an administration to protecting and preserving Brisbane's biodiversity. And not only preserving what's there but growing it as well with an expansion in our green space up to that target that we have in 2032 of 40% green cover across the city. So this is an important overlay, but the other important part of it though is that we get the mapping as accurate as possible and that that mapping doesn't unreasonably impact on private property owners and their homes and wanting to do minor changes or reasonable changes to their property. So what we've tried to do is based on feedback from local residents is incorporate a number of the different items received in feedback from local residents. And I particularly want to thank councillor Richards for her advocacy here and working very closely with local residents to make sure that their views were input, inputted into this process and part of the consultation process. Councillor Richards was very active encouraging people to provide their feedback and they did and I know that we received from memory around 280 submissions on this. And we've worked very hard to make sure we incorporate that community feedback into this final outcome.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension. Seconded.
Extension of time has been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor, please continue.
So in terms of some examples of the changes required, in some cases, the proposed overlay went across the top of houses. And obviously, houses aren't part of biodiversity and so amendments, amendments were made there so that the house and the building envelope was excluded from the biodiversity mapping. We didn't want a situation where someone wanting to put a deck on the house, it became a difficult process to go through. The, the ultimate aim here is to protect existing biodiversity of high value and that's what this will continue to do, but we don't want to make a resident's life harder to do reasonable things on their own private property. So it's about finding that right balance. This is something that we will continue to work on to refine the mapping. And I can also say as well that as with flood mapping, there will always be people who say, well, I've had a look at the flood mapping for my property and we don't believe it's accurate and I can provide some evidence that it's not accurate. In this particular case, I've had a chat to councillor Burke. If residents believe that the mapping is not accurate, we have a process in council whereby they can raise that issue with us and we will reassess that mapping for that particular property owner. So that process exists and we are happy to hear residents' feedback where they have some evidence that mapping, mapping is not accurate or reasonable. So just wanted to put that out there so that people are aware. Item C is a stores board submission, the contracting plan for dry hire of specialised mobile plant at quarries and asphalt plants. So there's two categories here, the hire of large plant and equipment on a operating hour basis and secondly, the hire of smaller equipment on a monthly hire basis. Due to benefits councillors' experience with our current contracting arrangement, we are seeking to procure a supplier who is able to continue providing council with dry hire arrangements for specialist mobile plant that is inclusive of servicing, maintenance and repairs. So obviously, that is a benefit that it's provided on that basis so that council is not responsible for the servicing and maintenance and repairs on this equipment. So the benefits are that council has reliability by having access to modern fleet with no plant being more than five years old. It's easier to secure any additional plant or replacement plant on short notice. The majority of spare parts are provided by the supplier and there's no capital outlay required from council as we experience changes in demand or increases in demand. So council seeks to establish an arrangement for an anticipated initial three-year term with options to extend for additional periods of up to four years with a maximum term of up to seven years. Item D is the carbon neutral account and public Item D is the carbon neutral account and public disclosure summary. I am proud and every councillor should be proud that Brisbane City Council is Australia's largest carbon neutral organisation. And other councils like to talk about climate change. We have been a leader in this field for a long period of time. And other councils, you know, they will debate motions in council, we actually get on and deliver outcomes. And this is one of those outcomes that we are proud to have achieved in 2017, where we achieved that carbon neutrality status. And that is a status that is not something that we've declared, it's a status that is certified by the national agency that looks at these things and that's the Australian Government National Carbon Offset Standard. And so we again submit all of our information on the programmes that we've initiated, the carbon reduction initiatives we've taken and also the offsetting initiatives that we've implemented as well. And that is then assessed by the national authority and certified at the end of that process. I am pleased to report that council reduced its carbon footprint by 8% compared to 2016-2017 financial year. So while we see across the community, across business, emissions continuing to grow in many cases, council is not only offsetting our emissions but we're also reducing our emissions. And that's an important point to make because if you just continue to increase your emissions and then offset them, that's not the full picture there. Obviously, the aim is to reduce emissions as well as offsetting them and that is what is happening here. So an 8% reduction in our carbon footprint is a fantastic outcome. I want to thank everyone that's been involved in this and I know councillor Hammond is particularly passionate about it. But some of the initiatives that we've been embarking on under this programme include the purchase of 50,000 megawatt hours of renewable energy, installation of solar systems on council facilities, whether it's libraries or bus depots, we're rolling out more solar facilities as well, solar systems. LED lighting being rolled out, so we're replacing the old style lighting with new energy efficient lighting which reduces power consumption and reduces emissions. And also, and that's not just in street lights or in bike path lights but also inside council facilities. We've replaced all the lights in the King George Square car park with efficient LED lights. We've replaced the lights in the Wickham Terrace car park with efficient LED lights. And we're always looking for more opportunities to reduce our emissions and our carbon footprint because that's what practical action on climate change is all about. It's about doing things, not talking about it endlessly, not having a debate and declaring a climate emergency and feeling good about yourself, but actually doing things. And that's what we will continue to do. So I'm very proud of this achievement to date. We're submitting our documentation for the next review and we look forward to that assessment to be carried out. But certainly, we should all celebrate that reduction in our carbon footprint. It is really something to celebrate. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Richard.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
There's a motion from councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Marks. This council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
item B be taken seriously Adam for voting purposes on its own.
Item B for voting, right?
Yeah, just for voting, yes, thanks. So A, C and D will be together.
Yep.
Just starting on item A, the major amendment package G which is rooftop gardens, we support the concept and will support this item going forward but do have some reservations around some of the items contained within and will put those on record. As I said, in a city, particularly the inner city and the inner ring of this city that is experiencing an extraordinary amount of growth and densification and a reduction in the number of open spaces per head of population in terms of providing that open space. Providing this in private development is becoming more and more crucial as we're seeing more and more density in those areas, whether it's places like South Brisbane and West End or here in the city to the valley or within that 5K ring, whether it's out at Cooperoo or Albion to the north, those sort of areas. It will be increasingly important to provide those spaces as a requirement of development. So rooftop gardens certainly, certainly should be and can be part of answering that issue as a city grows. But we do have concerns that overall the amendment does read particularly to facilitate things like rooftop bars rather than rooftop gardens. We don't dispute the want and the need to have entertainment areas generally or areas where people can enjoy the outdoors up 20 storeys above the ground. But we want to make sure that when this comes back and when it is finally adopted that the focus is fairly and squarely on what the intent of this should be and that is around providing gardens and vegetation. The size of structures that would be allowed would be significant and the vegetation required as a minimum is pretty insignificant and minimal. So while we do support the installation and in some cases I suppose going forward the requirement for these sort of spaces, as a development outcome, we want to make sure, want to make sure absolutely that they don't, don't get used in particular settings, whether that's in low density or even low medium density areas that can be used to sneak through an extra story of development as of right for a developer and then where they are in place, in appropriate places that they aren't simply used to create rooftop bars rather than actual rooftop gardens. So we will be supporting this at this stage but do have reservations about, about some of that going forward and we'll certainly keep an eye on that. On item B in terms of biodiversity and the biodiversity overlay, we do have some serious concerns around this item and how it will not address some of the key issues around maintaining Brisbane's biodiversity in our city. The proposed changes to the biodiversity overlay for clearing of vegetation on areas greater than 500 square metres certainly wouldn't have saved a site that this administration talks big about preserving that land out at Marycavat East, even, even if this biodiversity overlay was to have, have gone through. And yeah, beefing this up I think would be a good outcome, would be a good outcome in having particularly the high ecological significance subcategory, the high ecological significance strategic subcategory and the general ecological significance subcategory or the general ecological significance subcategory included there as well, which would protect all vegetation in Brisbane covered by the biodiversity overlay there as well. So Council Griffiths will certainly talk a bit more on this one but we do have some serious concerns going forward that this will not address the issues that we have seen in the city in terms of the wholesale loss on significant sites of vegetation around our city. On item C, the stores board submission for the specialist mobile plant, aquaries and asphalt plants, we'll be supporting this going forward but it does beg the question, what are the, what is the administration's plan for the Mount Cootha Quarry going forward? I know this piece of equipment will be used there, a specialist piece of equipment, that's fair enough, council needs to have this equipment to do the work that it needs to do. But I think the administration owes the community out there sooner rather than later an explanation as to what is going to happen, what is the future of that quarry because those people that are most directly affected by that have been told many conflicting things over many different years and the closure date continues to blow out further and further and further. So we would certainly like to see some action on that. And item D, the carbon neutral, carbon account and public disclosure summary, there are a number of documents included in here. We of course support council being carbon neutral and, but genuinely carbon neutral. What we saw when this initially came through council was a reliance on council in buying carbon offset credits because less and less of that carbon neutrality was coming from renewable energy sources. So we see council rate payers money now buying carbon credits to offset carbon emissions from projects like the Three Gorges project in China that has now flooded 115 villages and I can't imagine the accounting practices in terms of best practice environmental outcomes in that area are necessarily top shelf and other, other projects that are happening in other places around the world. I'm not confident that these documents can properly account for those carbon offsets in those markets and we should be doing more in terms of investing in offsetting that carbon locally, investing in local jobs, investing in local initiatives that support the reduction in council's overall carbon footprint. And one of those of course is on page six of this attachment C is, it talks about the excluded emission sources from this. So while we do note that some action has been taken by council broadly as an organisation to address emissions, there are a whole heap here, fugitive emissions from closed landfill sites and active landfill sites, council's investments. So you know, this should all be taken into account, office equipment and other purchase goods as well. There are a whole range of things that can be done particularly at landfill sites to reduce, to reduce those fugitive emissions. They, they could be better measured I think and better accounted for and better dealt with, with some actual investment in local initiatives that will drive down carbon emissions rather than the path of least resistance which is to go overseas and buy carbon credits using rate pay money without putting our shoulder to the wheel in terms of, in terms of addressing that locally. But we will support this going forward but do, do want to put on record those concerns about that and our support locally here in Brisbane, South East Queensland, Queensland and Australia in supporting and funding initiatives that will offset carbon emissions here at a local level and supporting local jobs.
Further speakers? councillor Shree.
Thanks Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item A regarding the amendment to city plan to encourage rooftop gardens. I'm strongly opposed to this amendment in its current form and I doubt the administration will be particularly interested in my comments but I might put a few thoughts on the record for the benefit of anyone who's watching online or reading the transcript later. The thing that is kind of left out of this conversation around this amendment is that actually it's already possible to include a rooftop garden on a high rise. And in fact, it's already possible to include a rooftop garden on a high rise with lots of shade structures and additional roofing and barbecue facilities and protection from the weather etcetera, etcetera. But if you do put a lot of roofing structures on, on the rooftop garden, it counts as an extra story. And actually to me, that makes perfect sense because we have limits and acceptable outcomes on, on heights for, for buildings and stories because that has a material impact on neighbours and on how the building is seen and experienced aesthetically and its impact on the neighbourhood. So when a, when a building has a lot of extra stuff on, on the roof, a lot of extra shade structures and shelters etcetera, it looks taller. It has a bigger impact in terms of overshadowing. It's essentially taking up more of the public airspace than it otherwise would. So right now, if developers want to include a rooftop garden, which I think is a great idea and I strongly encourage developers to do that, and they decide that they really need to have a lot of roofing on there and a lot of plant and a lot of extra shade structures, they can do so, it just counts towards one of the stories of the building. But what this amendment is seeking to do is to say, we're going to give you a bonus, we're going to give you an extra story, we're going to let you put heaps of roofing on top of the rooftop garden and not count that as a story, which is essentially the same as giving developers approval to build an extra story above and beyond the acceptable outcomes in, in the neighbourhood plan or city plan. So this is essentially giving certain developers, and it's really only going to be the big developers that have the capacity to take advantage of this, it's giving certain developers a height bonus for a rooftop garden, when actually if we really wanted to ensure there were more rooftop gardens in, in Brisbane and on our higher, new high rises, we could introduce those as requirements or incorporate them into design guidelines so that there's a strong regulatory pressure to deliver such outcomes, rather than simply to say, say to developers, oh yeah, you can build an extra story and we're not going to penalise you for it, which I think is completely the opposite of what we should be doing. I think already I'm hearing from a lot of residents who are frustrated when the, there's an excessive amount of what's called plant structure on the roof, so lift shafts, air conditioning units etcetera. When you add up all that infrastructure on a roof, it does start to add noticeably to the, the appearance or the, what, the apparent height of the building. And residents are already feeling frustrated that towers that are described as 10 storeys actually look more like an 11 or 12 storey building or towers that are described and applied for as 15 storeys actually look more like a 16 or 17 storey building. That happens all the time in my ward. And so I'm worried that this, this amendment to the city plan, rather than encouraging good outcomes in terms of rooftop gardens, simply allows developers to put more junk on the roof and in so doing create more floor space that they can then market to buyers on other levels of their building. Developers have a lot of discretion about exactly where they locate certain kinds of plant and equipment. There are a lot of trade-offs in terms of how you design these high rises. And so sometimes developers have to make that choice of, do we include certain forms of equipment within the tower itself or do we put it on the roof? Obviously the reason for including it within the tower itself is so that the height and the visual impact is not, not quite as great. But by allowing developers to put as much stuff on the roof as they want as possible and, and not have that count as an extra story, we're rewarding developers, we're giving them essentially free money because we're giving them increased ability to deliver, to deliver larger apartments with greater floor space, but we're not getting anything in return. We're essentially allowing developers to commodify and privatise more and more public airspace. And I think when I read the details of the code, actually the positive outcomes for the city as a whole are going to be pretty minimal as Labour Council acknowledged already that actual minimum requirements for what counts as a rooftop garden and what actually justifies this height exemption are pretty generous. You don't have to do very much to tick the box and say, oh, we've got a rooftop garden. But then once you've ticked that box, you can put all sorts of stuff up there. And yes, that, some of that might be like improve the outcomes for the residents who are living in that apartment, but it doesn't materially improve outcomes for the suburb or the city as a whole. And overwhelmingly, these changes are going to benefit a few wealthy investors, a few developers and maybe a few penthouse owners, but they're not going to benefit the broader citizenry. And there's a deeper problem here where council is distracting attention from the fact that we have a chronic shortage of usable public green space, particularly in inner city areas but across the city, where, where approving more and more high density developments with inadequate private spaces but nowhere near enough new public green space to cater for that growing population. As a result, we're seeing increased competition for space in public parks, we're seeing people having to fork out a large sums of money for gym membership because they've got nowhere else for recreation. And over time, that's going to deteriorate the quality of life for Brisbane residents. So the council, instead of dealing with that problem, instead of putting up the money to actually buy public green space and create more public parks in inner city areas and areas that are densifying rapidly, the council is simply saying to developers, oh, just whack on an extra story, don't worry, well, that'll, that'll be fine. That, that doesn't actually help the city at all, it is not in the long-term interest of the wider community. As I said at the outset, developers already have the ability to deliver really nice rooftop gardens, they already have the ability to deliver rooftop gardens with ample shade structures. The reason they don't do that is because they're trying to maximise profits. They could take a hit on height, they could, they could have one less story of their building and have a really good rooftop garden with lots of facilities. We saw today in City Planning Committee an example of a, a non-profit developer that built, I think it was a nine-storey tower in a site zone for 12 storeys. So that developer didn't need or feel obliged to absolutely max out the density on that particular site, but most developers do. They don't really care about positive long-term outcomes for the community as a whole. They'll use every loophole, they'll use every excuse to cram in as much height and as much as much density as they can possibly get away with. And what we're doing here with this amendment is just creating another opportunity for them to game the system. And I definitely don't support that.
Further speakers? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mrs Chairman. It's interesting, no one from the administration side want to talk about these important documents that are going through council today. I will be speaking on item B and D. In relation to the first one, it's in relation to the biodiversity overlay. We on this side of the chamber have significant concerns about this document that's coming through, it's taken a couple of years to bring this through. Certainly, we believe the administration has been both inconsistent and hypocritical in their development of this biodiversity overlay and the implementation of it. I suppose the main point to see here with this particular document that is really only applicable post approval. So if a developer really knows that they're going to go in and develop a site, they're more than likely to go in and clear the site before they submit the development application. Hence, the biodiversity overlay doesn't work. I suppose in terms of, there are three examples I'd like to point to in relation to the biodiversity overlay. And they have been discussed in this chamber before and all of these areas either have an overlay or should have an overlay on them. The first one is Chapman Place, Oxley. It's been raised numerous times by both myself and councillor Johnston. And that particular site at Chapman Place actually has a biodiversity overlay on it, in fact, significant biodiversity overlay. The bushland there is regarded as bushland we should treasure and preserve and actually improve. And yet, this council won't recognise that and won't actually go ahead to purchase this bushland even though it's under threat of development now. So we have land at Oxley that has the biodiversity overlay on it, but this council won't protect it. The second example is Carrara Street up in Mount Cravat. This land here has no biodiversity overlay on it, none whatsoever. And yet, this council, well, in fact, this council watched the land be cleared of its vegetation. So it wasn't only that we allowed it, we actually let it happen. So the vegetation on that land was cleared. But since then, we've gone out and spent $6.2 million on the land and said, gee, it's important land. So once again, we're being hypocritical with what we do. First case, Oxley, there is land there that we should be protecting under this biodiversity overlay, we're not. Second lot of land at Carrara Street in Mount Cravat, we allowed the vegetation to be cleared, it has no biodiversity overlay on it, and yet we've spent $6.2 million on it. And the third piece or third example I'd like to bring to the attention of the chamber is Andrew Avenue at Taragindi. And on that land, on the biodiversity overlay, it has a significant biodiversity overlay on it, in fact, it's part of a significant corridor as I'm holding up and showing people here. We've actually allowed a massive development to go on, a massive high rise development to go on that site. So the biodiversity overlay on that site didn't protect that site. They are just three examples, three examples of where we have this whole system of biodiversity and overlays, and yet for some reason we ignore them when we want to and we enact them when we want to as well. To me, this just shows the hypocrisy of particularly this administration. They have the talk, but they don't practise it with the walk. We won't be supporting this biodiversity overlay, we'll be abstaining in this vote. The second thing I'd like to talk about is our carbon neutral document here. And as councillor Cassidy said before, we have significant concerns about this too. Yes, we voted to support carbon neutrality of council in 1617. But there are a few issues that we are concerned about. The first is, in this report, it actually says that council's footprint is forecast to increase in 1920-21. So while we've been making reductions, while we've been making reductions, we're actually expecting a forecast for our carbon to rise into the future. The second point I'd like to make is I'm concerned that while we take into account our organisation, organisations that we partially own, we say we have no reason to worry about them. And I believe organisations or businesses that we have ownership in, particularly 50% and above, we should be working to ensure that those organisations are carbon neutral. So we believe the Brisbane Bus Build should be carbon neutral and we own 50% of that business. And QUU, why should that, when we own 85% of that business, not also be working towards becoming carbon neutral? So this council needs to not ignore those businesses, but actually step in as the controlling entity and actually work to get those businesses to move towards becoming carbon neutral. And the third point, which councillor Cassidy also touched upon, is the co benefits provided by the offset project. So we notice that when we buy offsets and there's a 9% offset we're buying from China, we have concerns about that. Wouldn't it be better investing that 9% that we're buying from China in Australia? There's a 5% buy we're buying from Australia, in fact, assists indigenous communities with culture, cultural issues, with infrastructure, so that they're actually dealing with bushfire. I believe, and I believe most residents would say, we should be spending the money at home. We shouldn't be spending the money overseas. This money should be used to assist our city and communities within Australia. So that 9% spend we have for China should be coming back to Brisbane and back to Australia. Why not consider upgrading another 25,000 streetlights? And that was a project we undertook just two years ago. Why aren't we doing more of those projects in Brisbane, more of those projects in Queensland or Australia and getting the outcome and benefits for the people of this great city? This is, it is concerning that we are spending the money this way and we believe the money would be better spent in Australia and in Brisbane in particular. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to enter the debate on item C, the Stores Board's submission on the contracting plan for dry hire of specialised mobile plant at quarries and asphalt plants. Chair, council hires a range of specialist mobile plant, including dump trucks, excavators, dozers, loaders, skid steers and forklifts to service requirements at the Brokalba and Mount Coother quarries, Eagle Farm and Riverview asphalt plants and at the temporary road surfacing stockpile sites. Approximately 70% of the total plant on hire is at the Brokalba quarry, with the remaining 30% spread between the other sites. The plant is hired on an operating dry hire basis, which means the equipment provided without an operator. In the hire agreement, the provider is responsible for plant servicing, parts, repair and maintenance and tyres. Council provides a workshop on the Brokalba site where all servicing minor repairs and maintenance is carried out. This new CPA will be a preferred supplier arrangement with no financial commitment through the awarding of the contract. Commitment is only made when an appropriately delegated council officer approves placing an order under the arrangement which ensures flexibility and value for money for council. So I ask all councillors to support this item to ensure the continued supply of good quality equipment to our offices, carrying out this important work to help build the roads and infrastructure that our growing city needs. Chair, I would like to address a comment made by councillor Cassidy in respect to the Mount Coother quarry. It's interesting to see that Labour is aligning itself yet again with the Greens in spreading mistruths and misconceptions about a quarry that's been in existence for more than 100 years, more than 100 years. The Mount Coother quarry suffered under years of irresponsible mismanagement under Sawley's arrogant Labour administration. Sawley drove the quarry into overproduction mode with diabolical consequences for the residents who were left spending in excess of $6,000 per household to deal with the impacts of their wild management approach. This was a direct result of Labour's decision to ramp up production to over 750,000 tonnes per year, something which our officers today fail to comprehend. Not only did Sawley refuse to compensate residents and apologise for the damage caused by his out of control operations, he said, and I quote from the Courier Mail of December 2002, "If I was a local resident, I would be out lighting candles to this administration for the wonderful decision we made." So Chair, through you, the Greens are now again spreading lies and misinformation. Fortunately, our Lord Mayor, Adrian Sriner, sent a letter that was read out at a forum and I want to put on record once again, this council, this Sriner administration, has no plans to close the quarry in the near future, with estimated reserves likely to see the quarry remain operational for a number of years to come. Once extraction is completed, council will undertake a complete rehabilitation of the site. We will then work together with residents to realise the many exciting possibilities to transform the site into a world class green space for future generations to enjoy. So this quarry has a long history of environmental compliance under this administration and this council, this administration continues to operate in accordance with conditions set by the Queensland Government. All environmental compliance monitoring is conducted by independent auditors and we provide these records to the Department of Environment and Science on a regular basis. So through you, Chair, I just want to place on the record the facts about the Mount Coother quarry and of course, I recommend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, hopefully I'll have time for item A, B, D and maybe C, but I don't think I'll get to C. Firstly, with respect to item A, the rooftop gardens, I actually agree with councillor Sri. There is a significant problem on this issue. The LMP have bowed to developers and by stealth, they are allowing developers an additional story in height on buildings right across the city. That is absolutely wrong, that is contrary to community expectation. This is a rollover to keep the developers happy, to ensure that they get a whole extra story of profit at the expense of adjoining neighbours who will be in shade, who lose further breezes, and this is a terrible, terrible planning decision. I also agree with councillor Sri, there already can be rooftop gardens, there are in my ward now and I have opposed them and I oppose them for this reason. One, rooftop gardens add an additional story of height. So where a building has a maximum of five stories in Tennyson Ward, we now have six storey buildings with solid structures on the roof, creating a sixth story. Two, these rooftop communal gardens, which might have a pot plant on them if they're lucky, are because the developer has asked for a larger footprint and there is no ground floor open space left. Essentially, there might be a setback of two and a half metres is example of some of the rear setbacks for five storey buildings in my ward, and this is wrong, absolutely wrong. And the reason the developers have been arguing for rooftop terraces is so they can get a bigger building footprint and a bigger building on their block of land to again maximise their profits. So the administration is reinforcing two bad practices here in my view, ignoring height levels, which they do anyway, I suppose, but ignoring, now officially ignoring, height levels in my ward and around the city by allowing developers a whole extra story for a rooftop garden when they can, as councillor Sri has outlined, have them already and do already. This will just mean bigger buildings in residential areas. And two, encouraging developers again to lose ground floor open space. This is absolutely unacceptable, there are significant impacts on adjoining properties, on wildlife, and these kind of planning changes are certainly not best practice in my view. It is essentially allowing higher buildings by creep and I absolutely do not support it. If developers want rooftop gardens, they can do it today, they can do it properly. But as I said, the rooftop gardens I've seen in my ward generally have a lot of plant and equipment on them and maybe have a couple of pot plants and that's not acceptable. With respect to the biodiversity amendment, I too have concerns about this, I put my concerns on the record to council. I am concerned that significant areas have not been protected where they should be and in some cases in my ward, some areas have had the biodiversity overlay reduced and that was a concern to a number of my bush care groups and others. I just can't trust the administration on this issue. They've not been able to demonstrate to me that they will, one, protect these areas and two, properly map them. They have consistently failed in this, in my view, across the city and we are seeing terrible decisions where areas are mapped and zoned for protection. For example, in Corinda and Oxley, where this council is allowing housing to be built. Meanwhile, in residential areas zoned for residential purposes, they buy back vacant blocks without trees and then try and claim it's for environmental protection. This administration is being ruled politically, not by good science, and I do not support what they are doing. Finally, with respect to the carbon account and public disclosure summary, again, this Lord Mayor wants a pat on the back for what he's doing, which is the basics. I don't hear, and I've mentioned this before, I don't hear anything new when we have the climate change debate, I don't hear anything new from this administration. As a city business, I'm sure we're not properly identifying all of our emissions and I can tell that based on the descriptions of the things that are being counted. For example, it presumes the following, all taxi trips are taken in South East Queensland between 7am and 7pm. Now, we know that's not the case because councillor Owen likes to go to concerts late at night in Boondle, so the emissions from her taxi trips definitely aren't being counted. It also makes presumptions like energy consumption at domestic hotels is assumed to be 65% electricity and 35% natural gas. And let me say, I'm not aware of too many Brisbane hotels using natural gas. Natural gas is not really a form of energy consumption being used in a major way there. Now, there's two examples, there are lots more. So here's my challenge, I'm not in a position, you know, to necessarily do anything, but I want to put on the record my vision for what should be happening. We should now be talking about a carbon neutral city, not a carbon neutral city business. And this administration is only attempting to map a minimal amount of its own businesses when what we should be doing as the civic leader is looking at the whole of Brisbane, including our businesses, our households, our city businesses as a corporate entity. And we should be moving on to the next step, which is discussing a carbon neutral city and what we do need to do to get to carbon neutrality as a city. I don't hear any vision from the LMP, Labour or even the Greens necessarily about this, although they may have some policy on it that I'm unaware of. But as a city, this administration stopped thinking about the things that we needed to do to move to the next phase of carbon neutrality and reducing our environmental footprint a long time ago. All they want to do is a pat on the back for the things they are doing now. To me, it is re-engaging with households and looking at how we can as a city, including residential, commercial, retail, sporting, all of those areas, and be looking at how we can move as a city towards carbon neutrality. And I just think that that is the discussion that we should be having, not congratulating ourselves for simply running the business of this city in a very narrow way. So that's my challenge to everybody out here and I've had the chance to talk to a lot of people after the climate action discussion and talked to a lot of residents and our lost opportunity here is, again, working with those businesses and residents to make sure our city... our city is carbon-neutral, not just our basic city businesses. And on that, there are a number of things I think we should be investigating which could make a huge difference. And the first one of those is waste to energy. I remember it used to be discussed when I was the deputy chairman of Field Services, or whatever it was called back then. I remember going with councillor McLoughlin to look at a few places, and that's just never gone anywhere, and that's a decade ago. There are cities all over the world, you know, that can do these sorts of things, and whilst we do a little bit, we've got a little bit coming from Swan Bank, we should be looking at how to do this in a bigger way. So to me, there are lost opportunities that this council, again, because it's resting on its laurel, is just not interested in pursuing any further. Again, we used to do practical measures for residents like rain tanks, but we got to 10% of the city having rain tanks and we stopped. And now we're about to head into another drought, or it looks like it might be another drought. And this council doesn't have any strategies to deal with these sorts of things. There's a lot of other issues certainly out there that I think we should be looking at, but to me, it's time that the discussion moved on for not just trying to get a pat on the back for what the corporation of the City of Brisbane is doing, but looking at what we can do as a city and as a civic leader within that city to see our city achieve carbon neutrality, and that's where the discussion should be.
Further speakers? councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise in support of item D on the agenda today. Brisbane City Council is committed, and this side of the chamber with councillor Toomey, is committed to ensuring our city is clean, green, and sustainable for current and future generations. I'm proud to say that we are a sustainability leader, operating as the largest carbon-neutral certified organisation in the country. Council has been carbon-neutral since the early 2017, and we continue to maintain this status and expand upon the ways we can reduce our carbon and footprint. Just going to repeat that. We continue to look at new ways to reduce our carbon footprint. The organisation's 1819 carbon account illustrates council's commitment to carbon reduction and sustainability. In the 1890 financial year, we were able to reduce our carbon footprint by 8% from the 1617 financial year, as well as negate over 49 tonnes of carbon admissions. This reduction is a result of council's sustainability actions, because we just don't talk the talk over here, we walk the walk. So we are purchasing carbon offsets. The purchase of over 50,000 megawatt-hours of renewable energy, installation of solar system on major council facilities, such as our four recovery resource centres, libraries, and bus depots. The retrofitting of over 25,000 streetlights for energy-efficient lamps. With continued actions like these, I am confident that council will keep reducing its carbon footprint in future years and maintain carbon neutrality. It's also important for council to lead by example, to encourage Brisbane residents and businesses to reduce their carbon admissions. Our goal is to ensure that the average household emissions from energy, waste, and transport is below six tonnes of carbon dioxide equivalent by 2031, and I'm confident that we'll get here. I find it interesting that councillor Griffith was saying that they're going to sit on the fence of this again, and it is no surprise, because their own Labor Federal guys in the federal government tried to declare, tried to bid to declare the climate emergency. It was absolutely a disgrace, because they don't even believe-
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Griffiths?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Adit. Please continue.
Thank you. Councillor Griffith did say that they were abstaining on this very important issue and the challenges that we have about carbon neutrality, and how we are committed, on this side of the chamber with councillor Toomey, to reduce our carbon admissions through real actions. Unlike the Labor, those on the other side and their colleagues down in federal parliament, when it's reported, it was a stunt. The Labor Federal guys are an embarrassment. They did a stunt, they have 68 members in federal parliament, and only five of those turned up to their own motion and bid to our climate. On this side of the chamber, I am exceptionally proud that we continue, and our officers, for hard-working officers, for their dedication to continue to reduce our carbon admissions by real action. Not just speaking about it, trying to do a stunt about it, can't make a decision about it, have no vision for it. We're actually doing it right now. We are the leading carbon-neutral organisation in Australia, which is something that we should all be very proud of. Thank you.
Councillor Griffiths, you had a misrepresentation?
Yes, I actually said we would be abstaining on the biodiversity overlay, but carbon admissions we'll actually be voting for.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Burke?
Cheers, thanks, Mr Chairman. I just rise into the debate on item A and item B, which is the major amendment package for rooftop gardens, and also the major amendment package for the biodiversity overlay, Mr Chairman. Obviously, the rooftop gardens is a outcome of Brisbane's Future Blueprint, where the residents of Brisbane told us, the residents of Brisbane told us, they want more green space on buildings and in buildings, Mr Chairman. And so this administration is going about implementing the feedback and recommendations of the residents of Brisbane. And so we have gone through the process. We started this process by going to the state government, proposing to make an amendment, Mr Chairman. We've done our due diligence, and we are now coming back to go to the state for their first state interest cheque, and from there go out to public consultation on the proposal that we have before us today, Mr Chairman. Despite some of the debate from those opposite, let's be very clear where this is going to apply, Mr Chairman. So it is the medium-density residential zone, it is the high-density residential zone, it is the district centre zone, the major centre zone, the principal centre zone, and the mixed-use zone. So some of those key, more heavily populated parts of the city are where we see both commercial uses as well as residential uses, Mr Chairman, where we will see these types of rooftop gardens popping up. It is not happening.
Correct. It's obviously-
It is not happening, Mr Chair-
Councillors, we heard in silence, please. Councillor Burke?
It's not, as I said, as I was about to say, Mr Chairman, before I was interrupted, it's not the low-density residential parts of the city, it's not the low- to medium-density residential parts of the city where we will be seeing these types of buildings, rooftop gardens, happening, Mr Chairman. What we have done, and a credit to the council officers though, is we have looked at some of the best examples of rooftop gardens that we already have in this city. We've also looked at what's happening overseas, Mr Chairman, because this rooftop garden idea is not something that the Lord Mayor, myself, and the Deputy Mayor, and others in this side of the chamber sat down and went, "This sounds like a great idea." This is things that are happening around the world, Mr Chairman. So you see in Singapore, New York, other world cities, rooftop gardens facilitating the requirements of the citizenry in terms of green space, providing lungs for the city, and providing those quiet spaces for people to relax in their buildings, Mr Chairman. But what we've seen from the opposition today is the start of, obviously, what their little campaign is, because councillor Cassidy let the cat out of the bag. Obviously, the Labor Party's attack is going to be, there's going to be a bar coming to a rooftop near you. Because councillor Cassidy raised this concern, "Oh, you know, we don't like this idea of a bar, you know, we don't think you should be having a bar." What councillor Cassidy didn't do in his speech, like a lot of those on the other side, Mr Chairman, don't do when they speak in this place, is read the whole part of what's in this particular package, because if he had, and for the record, in section 47 of what we have before us today, it says, "A structure accommodating a bar or food or drink outlet if in the mixed-use zone or a centre zone." So not in residential buildings, but in mixed-use zones, Mr Chairman, or in centre zones. So like in the CBD, over the top of, I don't know, the winter garden, where there's already a rooftop garden, Mr Chairman, which people use and enjoy. These are the sort of things that we want to see in the city, because it provides more to see and do. It provides residents with more opportunities, Mr Chairman. And as I was saying earlier, we have looked at some of the examples that are happening across the city. Some of those great examples that have been delivered by developers, we've actually taken what they've been doing, but we've increased the amount of green space. So in some cases, we've tripled or doubled on what is already being delivered by some of the developers in the city, and said, "We want three times or twice the amount of green space that's currently being provided in some of those great rooftop spaces across this city." So the 15% is a significant increase on some of the already delivered rooftop gardens across this city, and it is great to see that this will be going out to consultation. And I imagine there'll be quite a bit of interest and quite a bit of feedback on it. I think it is a great thing, because better designed, greener buildings in our city is what this administration wants to see, and that's what we're trying to facilitate and work towards. Turning to item B, Mr Chairman, and it's been a bit of a broad-ranging debate, councillor Griffiths announced the new Labor Party policy of the purchase of any parcel of land that is in the biodiversity overlay. That was what councillor Griffith's key argument was, that just because it was in the biodiversity overlay, council should buy things. Just in the biodiversity overlay, you didn't buy it, well, you should buy it, is what he said.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Do it.
It's what he said. I mean, that's the wonderful thing about Hansard, and now the live streaming, Mr Chairman. He said, "You know, Chapman Place, you should buy it because it's in the biodiversity overlay. This other one, you should buy, it's in the biodiversity overlay." Well, you know what is also in the biodiversity overlay, Mr Chairman? A certain block of land at Tooey Forest that the state government's trying to flog off to council. Not only is it in the biodiversity overlay, Mr Chairman, but it's also in the matters of state environmental significance, which is the highest protection under state legislation that a block of land can have for environmental values. And the state government is trying to flog it off, either to council or to a developer, Mr Chairman. So the Labor Party's credibility when it comes to protecting the environment is naught, zip, zilch, nada, zero. Because, because they can sit there and criticise, and one of them described that this process has been ruled by politics, not by good science, which is a great endorsement for the Queensland Herbarian who did the work. So look forward to pointing that out to the relevant folks at the Queensland Herbarian, who apparently are ruled by politics, not by good science. Eminent environmentalists, eminent professors, who are ruled by politics, not by science. Look forward to pointing that out to them and telling them who actually said that. But all you have to do, Mr Chairman, is not look at what we've done here, because this is a detailed study delivered through the Queensland Herbarian to give the most up-to-date, the most progressive mapping that we can to reflect the biodiversity values of the city. All you have to do is look at the crayon-coloured-in map that formed part of City Plan 2000, where half of the sites that councillor Griffiths lectured us on aren't even protected under their biodiversity mapping back in 2000, Mr Chairman. In fact, for those who can see, it is only the really, really dark green part of this map that is biodiversity. The other bits are the sports fields, or semi-rural, or semi-rural natural areas in the city. So they're not even bushland, they're not even biodiversity areas, they're not the waterway corridors, they did not have their own mapping, Mr Chairman. So how can you trust them? When they stand up and criticise this side of the chamber who have gone through this process, we've consulted with the residents of Brisbane, we've done the science with the Queensland Herbarian, Mr Chairman, the eminent people who are qualified to do this work, it's not me sitting there looking at near map going, "Oh, that block looks like it has trees on, or that block looks like it has trees on." It is scientists from the Queensland Herbarian doing the work, Mr Chairman. Then how can you take the Labor Party's word when they criticise? How can you? Because their track record is appalling, their own history in administration is shocking, and their comments in this place where they attack eminent people in this community who are qualified to do this work are just outrageous, Mr Chairman. This side of the chamber has been out, we've consulted with the community, we've listened to residents, and we're providing the best, most up-to-date mapping so that residents across this city can make an informed decision on what they want to do on their block, what the values are that need protecting, and we can make sure that we're meeting our target, 40% natural green cover, or natural habitat cover across this city, Mr Chairman, and continue to make Brisbane the cleanest, greenest city, the most biodiverse capital city in Australia, and a great place to live, work, and raise a family.
There was a misrepresentation to you, councillor Griffiths?
Yes, look, what I said was biodiverse land is important, but I didn't say we should be buying all of it, I said we should be buying some of it, and I gave examples. I'm sorry the councillor gets confused about that.
Further speakers? Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Been some interesting commentary on the different items here. First, I wanted to address councillor Griffith's comments about the biodiversity overlay. He said, "We've got serious concerns about this." Well, funny that their Labor mates up in George Street don't, because they just signed off on it. So, and the Queensland Herbarian doesn't, because that's where a lot of the assistance with the mapping came from. So, look, I'm not sure, I'm yet to hear actually any legitimate concerns, other than trying to re-prosecute particular individual blocks of land that the state government's selling that they want us to buy, or political point scoring that they want to make. But I actually didn't hear any legitimate concerns that they raised. With the carbon neutrality position that we had, the-
Polling's-
Oh, is it? Is it? Is that right? Okay. Yeah. They're driven by polls. Is that why they knifed Rod Harding? Is that why they knifed Peter Cumming? They're driven by polls. We're driven by principles and policies and an agenda for the city. We know they're driven by polls, they're driven by slinging mud, they're driven by playing the person. Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Sri.
I'm in trouble hearing the Lord Mayor speak, and I ask you call the chamber to order.
As is expected, all councillors will allow all speakers to be heard in silence. Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. In relation to the carbon neutrality policy and our annual report, it's interesting, because there's a lot of speculation about what's in and what's out, and, well, it's actually the federal agency that makes the decision on whether we're carbon-neutral, not us. So once again, all of the claims about how things have been left out, that's actually up to them to judge whether we've made the appropriate recognition of that carbon neutrality or not. So once again, an attempt, an attempt to cast dispersions on the work of this council, but one that doesn't stand up to any kind of scrutiny at all. But finally, I wanted to talk about the rooftop gardens discussion. There's some quite extraordinary comments made there, quite extraordinary. We heard one councillor suggesting that this was all about maximising profits, a whole extra story of profits. Well, I don't know what universe that councillor is in, but you don't get a whole extra story of profits from a rooftop garden. It's not space that you can sell to anyone. So it's a ludicrous statement to make. And then the suggestion that, the suggestion that somehow this is about letting developers get away with building an extra story. Well, as they pointed out, ultimately, rooftop gardens are possible at the moment, but the process that they have to go through makes it harder than it should be. We're simply trying to make it easier and more feasible so that, so that people can benefit from these things. And councillor Sri's argument that, "Oh, well, people in the building might benefit, but no one else does." Well, when you pay for an apartment, there's a reasonable expectation you'll benefit from the facilities in that building. That's, you know, not exactly groundbreaking. And so why does councillor Sri have something against residents living in apartments? Why does he want to deny them the opportunity to have a rooftop garden? I just don't think that's fair or reasonable. So we are simply trying to promote this, which is seen as a good thing around the world. When you go to leading cities, this is what they are trying to encourage. And so you have councillors in this place who somehow think it is a bad thing and should be opposed. And good luck to Labor trying to campaign against rooftop bars as well. That will go well for you, that will win you lots of votes. This is not about rooftop bars, but people love rooftop bars. I think the evidence is there to see. Finally, with the, back to the carbon neutrality issue, councillor Griffiths raised the concern that there was some work being done overseas. Well, last time I checked, there is one planet that we live on, and we have a global environment that we're dealing with, and climate change is a global issue that requires a global response. So somehow, in councillor Griffith's mind, if you plant a tree in one part of the world, it's different to planting a tree in another part of the world? We have one world, we all live on this planet, and we all have the responsibility to be good stewards of this planet. And so apparently, the lives and the quality of life of people in China is not worth the same as people in Australia, according to- same as people in Australia, according to councillor Griffiths. But guess what? A national agency that certifies this kind of thing thinks it's okay.
Claimed to be.
So councillor Griffiths, once again...
Point of order councillor Griffiths? Sorry, Lord Mayor, excuse me, sorry. Point of order to you?
Just claimed to be misrepresented.
Lord Mayor, please continue. Please turn, oh, hang on.
Climate change is a global issue that requires a global response, and to think we can cordon off our little section of the world, put our fingers in our ears or close our eyes and pretend that the rest of the world doesn't exist, and pretend that climate is not a global issue, I don't think anyone would actually agree with that argument. So ultimately, if the national agency that signs off on carbon neutrality thinks it's an appropriate response, then that's good enough for me, because climate change is a global issue, and we are doing our part as a city to address that global issue.
Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, I love being misquoted by the LMP. I made no such statement that lives in China are less than lives in Australia, no such statement. What I did say is the money should be spent in Australia rather than overseas.
Thank you. All right, I will now put the resolutions A, C and D. All those in favour of A, C and D, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. On item...
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston.
Division.
And councillor Shree. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour, one against and one abstention.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, I will now put the resolution for item B. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour, one against and five abstentions.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee Special Report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the special report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, twenty-first of October, twenty nineteen, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the special report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on the twenty-first of October, twenty nineteen, be adopted. Is it in debate, Lord Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as councillors would be aware, the resignation of councillor Amanda Cooper and her subsequent selection to be the LMP candidate for Aspli at the next state election has created a vacancy in council in the Water Brackenridge, and in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act, this appointment being made today in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act will fill the vacancy. And I'm pleased to report that that vacancy will be filled by the LMP's nomination, Sandy Landers. And so I'm delighted to welcome Sandy to the chamber, to the team, and to the Brisbane City Council. Sandy is a long-term resident of the North Side of Brisbane. She started her career as a teacher at Aspli State High School before a couple of regional stints for work commitments. She then moved back to Brisbane's North Side and has been on the North Side ever since. She is passionate about her local community, and I know that she will continue the great work that councillor Amanda Cooper did in that part of Brisbane. There are so many great achievements that councillor, well, Amanda Cooper was able to achieve as the councillor for Brackenridge Ward, and I know that Sandy Landers, even though she has big shoes to fill, will fill those shoes and do a fantastic job representing the residents of Brackenridge Ward. She is a real local, but also she's not unfamiliar with the field that we are in, and she has done a bit of work as well in the electorate office of a number of MPs, including Peter Dutton and also Tim Mander. And for anyone that has worked in an electorate office knows that a big part of the job is listening to people, hearing their concerns, and then action, and then taking action. And those skills are really important skills for a local councillor. And I know that Sandy has those skills. She is a very good listener, but she also is focused and determined and driven by getting outcomes for the residents, not just listening to them, but getting outcomes. So she will do that. Sandy has two children, Jordan and Courtney, and I know that Sandy is immensely proud of the young adults that they have become. And she also does incredible work as a foster carer as well, and she has helped a large number of, of young people who have been in her care and given them love and care and a sense of purpose in life. And I've got to say, anyone who is a foster carer has my absolute respect. It is such an important thing, but it is also, in many ways, a sacrificial thing to do as well. And so, good on Sandy for her commitment to her community and her commitment to helping others and to making a difference in people's lives. I again want to congratulate Sandy on her nomination for this position. I look forward to working with her to make sure that the people of Brackenridge are extremely well represented going forward, as they have been until now, and to make sure that Sandy, as a member of this team, continues working with us to make sure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair, and I rise to also support Sandy Landers as she comes and joins our team. I was present on Sunday when Sandy was announced as the LMP's nominee to fill the casual vacancy of Amanda Cooper as she embarks on this new journey in her service to the community in the role as candidate for Aspli. And what struck me about Sandy's speech is that she outlined her own vision for, for the Brackenridge Ward, that absolutely built on the outstanding work that had been undertaken and delivered by Amanda Cooper in her role as councillor for Brackenridge. I met Sandy nearly, nearly fifteen years ago. Our children went to the same school, St Paul's at Bald Hills, and we met through the music supporters group. Although our kids played different instruments, you know, we came together to, to support them in their endeavours. So I've seen firsthand the effort that she put into volunteering, and I know that that will carry on in her role as councillor for Brackenridge. If I could just echo the sentiments of the Lord Mayor with respect to Sandy's commitment as a foster carer. When I was a member for Aspli, I had the very great opportunity to work in an area as a minister with the Department of Child Safety, and it takes a very special type of person to become a foster carer, and it's quite a shame in the community, we actually need foster carers. But unfortunately, there are children that are not safe, home is not a safe environment for them, and it's people like Sandy who open their hearts and their homes to these young people that really makes her a very special person in a very special cohort of people. And as her new border buddy, I know that I'll be working very strongly with her, along with councillor Hammond, to assist her in any way we can, but I know that it absolutely builds on the work of Amanda Cooper and that we will do everything we can to make sure that the residents of all of our wards are well represented. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thank you, Chair. As a border buddy of Sandra Landers, I'm sure I'll be able to assist her in her transition, in her transition into becoming the Brackenridge councillor. I read in the local paper that Sandy, or Sandra, Sandra, Sandy, Sandy, Sandra in the papers, but it's known by Sandy, went to school at Nashville High. We have a, what is now known as Brackenridge High, a connection there. My mother was the second ever girls' school captain at Nashville High a few years ago, giving her, giving her age away there. We just went to the fiftieth anniversary of Nashville High last year, so that was a great celebration. So I just want to wish, wish Sandy all the best in her role as a councillor over the next five and a half months or so, and look forward to supporting my good friend Kath Palmer in, in getting elected to the Brackenridge Ward and serving the people of the Brackenridge Ward with distinction in this place beyond March twenty twenty.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise very briefly in support of the new councillor for Brackenridge Ward. Again, I've known Sandy for many, many, many years, and I couldn't be prouder of her for putting herself up as the new councillor for Brackenridge. She's a strong woman, she'll do a great job out there. She was vice captain of Nashville High, Brackenridge High. Her children went to St Paul's, she lives in Bald Hills, she is a true local in the area and a hard-working woman. Sandy did work twenty years as an English teacher, which did cause her to have to move out of Brisbane and do her country service, which I think some of the teachers in this room and many teachers across our great city of Brisbane did as well. So, but she found her way back to Brisbane, and she taught at local schools, but even when she stopped being a teacher, she actually helped out at local schools as well. This is the type of calibre of person that we've got in, as the new councillor for Brackenridge Ward. Of course, I'm delighted that the office next door to me has now full with a councillor in it, because the temporary Brackenridge office is right next door. So I look forward to working with Sandy and helping her with councillor Davis on her way, but I don't think she'll need much help because she's going to hit the ground running. She's got her ideas, she's following on from the great workers from councillor Cooper. And again, the calibre of person, soft-natured, hard-working, intelligent woman is the next councillor for Brackenridge. Thank you.
Further speakers? Did being none? I will now put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, can I draw your attention to the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, please? Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fifteenth of October, twenty nineteen, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Davis, that the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the fifteenth of October, twenty nineteen, be adopted. Is it in debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week's committee presentation was on the visitor economy twenty thirty-one vision for the Brisbane region. We know Brisbane is overflowing with potential, in fact, our whole region is overflowing with potential. We are Australia's nature capital, spectacular, spectacular natural environment, World Heritage Forests, rivers, bays, everything here in the South East Queensland corner. So we are very excited to see the opportunities that is presented by this new visitor economy strategy, and in particular, the growth opportunities. Currently, visitor economy is about seven point eight billion dollars and supports sixty-five thousand jobs in Brisbane alone. Now, we're talking about visitor economy, it's international students, business travellers, visiting friends and relatives, holiday visitors, and those that may be here for conferences, businesses and major events. We know that the latest figures show the numbers of international and domestic visitors are rising, but we can do better. We've identified one extra stay a night can raise six point five billion dollars' worth of increased economic potential in this region as well. So currently, twenty-eight percent of Brisbane airports' arrivals stay in Brisbane overnight. Melbourne, for example, get forty-two percent conversion staying overnight. So on average, we're about one and a half nights shorter than any other new world city around the world. So we want visitors to stay longer, we want them to enjoy our region, and we want them to spend more. So that is what this visitor economy strategy is all about. We need to create experiences that Brisbane region becomes famous for. We know Brisbane is better experienced than explained, and we need to make sure that we can get people here and enjoying those experiences. There is more to see and do than ever before. We've got the Brisbane New Runway coming online next year, the International Cruise Ship Terminal, Queens Wolf, Brisbane Metro, new precincts like How Smith Wolves, Fortitude Music Hall. All of these are creating our global recognition as a remarkable, unique experience. So we're working on a few outcomes already, the Collaborative Marketing Fund, the Cooperative Marketing Campaigns, the Experience Development Framework. We'll continue to roll out city, the new city's new river hubs, and we're also working closely with industry to make trade-ready commissionable products available as well. We'll continue our local advocacy programme, and of course, ongoing industry capacity building projects as well. So we know that there's more to see and do here, we just need to let other people know that there's more to see here and do, and the more that we can get them to stay that one extra night, they'll actually be able to experience that. There was also a petition that was presented last week at committee around the operations through Forest Lake on the bus service and whether they could be increased. There was a review about our Buzz Service One Hundred, which at the moment runs from six AM to eleven PM, ten minutes in peak and fifteen off-peak, but also the One Eighteen peak hour, which is the inbound trips in the morning peak at fifteen-minute intervals and afternoon at twenty. Having a look at that, the transport officer said that the Route One Hundred is probably catering for what it needs at the moment, but the One Eighteen definitely could look at an extension of service after five-thirty for those staying a little bit later after work as well. So we have put that into the recommendation. So, we have put that into the recommendation, and I have already contracted Translink to consider extension of that number 118 after 5.30 in the peak hour session. Thank you.
Further speakers. De being none, I'll, councillor Adams, I'll put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee, please. Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. As this is my first report as the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, I'd like to thank councillor Huang for his able filling in last week as the acting chair last week. Thank you very much, councillor Huang. And there have been some changes, obviously, in this committee. Councillor Mackay, thank you for your representation, and welcome councillor Owen to this committee now. I'm sure we'll do some fantastic work in the lead up to the end of this calendar year and into the start of the next year. I, the committee, the Infrastructure Committee, obviously, I wasn't there last week, so I'm reporting on what was presented while councillor Huang was in the acting chair, but the committee received an update on a few different programmes, three different programmes, our continued investment in safety, in the safety school initiatives, the SAM speed awareness monitors, and the 1920 black spots programme. Now, these are all projects that were more than ably overseen by the previous chair for infrastructure councillor Cooper, and I just wanted to place on the record my appreciation to her for her very capable management of this particular portfolio, as well as to the Lord Mayor for asking me to fill in, and I'm very pleased to be able to do so. But councillor Cooper undertook some great outcomes on behalf of the city, infrastructure investments, including Telegraph Road across all the stages, Johnson and Stapleton Roads, Progress Road, the inner city bypass upgrade, the transport plan, investment around our schools to encourage safety improvements, and the Move Safe Pedestrian Safety Review, to name but a few. So, my plaudits to councillor Cooper, and I wish her well as the future representative of this, at the state level for Aspli. Mr Chair, the two last week's Infrastructure Committee, safety around schools is an initiative that council has been continuing to invest in, and one of the ways through that is the development of traffic management plans, or TMPs, for schools. All councillors will be aware of this great programme, a tool for schools to assess, document and communicate the way in which students can travel safely to and from school. To date, 180 schools in Brisbane have completed a TMP, and council has installed or is in progress of installing enhanced loading zones signage and poles at 137 schools. Each school's TMP includes an action plan on how to address its travel management issues, and is a living document that is updated throughout the year as circumstances at each school change. Some of the ways that council has improved safety with TMPs is implementing an additional drop and go zone, or installing enhanced school loading zone signage and poles, parking enforcement, as well as mapping and encouraging walking and cycling to and from school. In the 1920 financial year, 28 schools have had safety works undertaken, such as enhanced school loading zone signage and poles, loading zone improvements, school crossing improvements, parking restriction improvements, that includes signage and line marking, as well as changed changes to parking timing restrictions. So, some fantastic outcomes that were talked about in the committee last week. Some examples, Our Lady of Lords Primary School in Sunnybank had loading zone improvement, enhanced school loading zone signage and poles installed. The St Joseph's Primary School in Kangaroo Point installed enhanced school loading zone signage at the existing loading zone on Leopard Street. At the Lords Hill College, there's been an improved warning signage and line marking on approach to the pedestrian refuge on Beatrice Street. At Graceful State School, enhanced school loading zone signs have been installed at the existing loading zones location on Acacia Avenue. In addition, since term two this year, the council has offered incentives each term for schools who have completed a TMP, Transport Management Plan, and through this, five schools have won a fence banner in both terms two and three. The school winners for term two and three were the Gravelli State School, the Sherwood State School, the Sandgate State School, the Bolimba State School and New Farm State School. They were the term two winners. The term three winners, Mitchellton State High School, Jinder Lee State School, Warrigal Road State School, Ithaca Creek State School and Ascot State School, so winning those banners. The committee last week was shown the nine different fence banners that the eligible schools can choose from, as well as what the successful school winners had chosen. Council, Mr Chair, is working with four schools this year in the 1920 financial year to focus on improved pedestrian and cycle access and safety improvements for all road users. These include, or these are, the Balmoral State High School, the McDowell State School, the Robertson State School and the Sandgate State School. So, all improvements there for pedestrian and cycle access. Also this year, Mr Chair, in the 1920 financial year, council is investing in improving safety at schools through the Safe School Travel Infrastructure Initiative at nine different schools, at Acacia Ridge State School, the Brackenridge State High, Corraby State School, Loretto College, Red Hill Special School, St Joseph's College, St Reader's College, Warrigal Road State School and Wilston State School. Mr Chair, also in committee last week, and now councillors will be seeing these on their roads in their SAM signs, the speed awareness signs, starting yesterday, we've got Halloween SAM, the latest smiley face, which will run until the 4th of November, and then after that, roll back to the standard SAM sign, but probably just in the precursor to the Christmas SAM signs. So, these allow for, or provoke some interest from our residents, and I think it's very useful to have the turnover of different signs to draw attention to them, and people do note them, and we get compliments from all our residents about them, and certainly we know what their effect is. This year, in 1920, council is investing more than a million dollars in SAMs. Twenty-seven new SAMs will be installed during this financial year, bringing the total number of SAMs to 176. So, council is currently investing, investigating 47 new footing sites for construction in this month, and another 27 sites for construction in January next year. Council installs SAMs for at least one month before moving to a new location to allow enough time to have a positive impact on motorist behaviour, and they, as councillors will be aware, may be returned to previously installed locations if speeding becomes an issue again. Mr Chair, I just want to finish on the last item that was before the committee last week, which was the black spot programme that council receives funding through, thanks to the federal government, and aims to improve road safety where there's been a significant number of crashes, to deliver improvements that target safety issues through low cost, high benefit upgrade. The criteria requires that for a road, or a section of it, or an intersection to be eligible, it needs to have contributed to, or is likely to have contributed to, serious motor vehicle crashes. There are a number of criteria, including the recorded crash history data, which must have a minimum benefit to cost ratio of 2.0. For this financial year, council has received funding to deliver upgrades at five black spots, at Azalia Street, Eugenia Street in Ala, in Burwood Road, Logan Road intersection at Holland Park, at Bowen Street, Lutwich Road at Windsor, Gregory Terrace Boundary Street and Spring Hill, and Beanley Road, Nursery Road in Runcorn. Mr Chair, that is the committee presentation that was in the Infrastructure Committee last week, and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor McLaughlin. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Planning Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. Mr Chairman. Been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Toomey. The report of the City Planning Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. Just before I get to the reports, I'd like to say welcome back Cotter to councillor McLaughlin. As unaccustomed as I am, in the seven odd years I've been in cabinet while councillor McLaughlin was in cabinet, I always used to be the committee report before him, Mr Chairman, but it's great to have councillor McLaughlin back in the council chamber. Just quickly, before I get to the committee report, Mr Chairman, of course, this administration continues to roll out our award-winning neighbourhood planning process, Mr Chairman, and obviously, we announced as part of the budget that we were doing new neighbourhood plans. So, the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan had their first community plan team meeting last night, and as this administration has done repeatedly, we've always looking for improvements, Mr Chairman, as part of the process when it comes to neighbourhood planning, and responding to changes in the way that people communicate, and we've updated the terms of reference, Mr Chairman, as we always look to seek to find better ways to make sure that residents can communicate and engage with parts of the community when it comes to being part of a community planning team meeting as well, Mr Chairman. So, particularly around the use of social media, which has evolved and changed significantly over the years, Mr Chairman, so we've actually made sure now that our terms of reference for community plan team members have a particular section around social media, making sure that they feel free to engage and communicate with their residents, most importantly, and they can be involved and engaged in the process, which is really important, Mr Chairman. We've also taken out some of the provisions that were in there around engaging with the media more broadly, and also the confidentiality clause, and replacing that with some commercial and confidence words, to make sure that if there is anything that's commercial and confidence, that's protected, but residents feel completely open and have the ability to engage and talk to people. One of the big things, though, is that we do respect people, their request for privacy, so no photos without the permission of the people in the photos. Turning to the committee report, Mr Chairman, there was a committee report provided about a development at 181 Wecker Road Mansfield, this is the Mansfield Tavern, and this is this is a site that has seen probably its heyday, and is in need of a significant amount of investment, Mr Chairman. It was originally built back in 1973. It was originally built back in 1973, and obviously, the owners of the site are looking to do some improvements as part of this. So, public notification was carried out from the 5th of April through to, sorry, the 15th of March through to the 5th of April, and there was only nine submissions received, and five submissions received for stage two, nine submissions received for stage one, five for stage two, Mr Chairman, and obviously, this is an important local asset for the community. It will have a significant amount of work done to remove the existing building and then completely upgrade the site. So, stage one will see 2,772 square metres of gross floor area, as well as a 938 square metre outdoor dining area, 197 car parks, as well as, as well as five car parks for people with disabilities. Stage two will see an additional 5,436 square metres, as well as an additional 179 square metres of outdoor dining. So, a very large development, and I know from councillor Murphy's support of this particular DA that it's an important asset for the community. It's what's lacking down in that part of the city, from what I understand, from comments from local residents, but also from councillor Murphy, about having a hub or a central point for people to go in a local area where they can get good food and offering, as well as a range of different retail choices as well. So, I commend the committee report to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Burke. I'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please. Councillor Hammond.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee held on Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Richards, to the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 15th of October 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Hammond.
Point of order.
A point of order.
I was just going to ask if B and D could be taken separately for voting purposes only?
B, excuse me, I'm just going to repeat that to you.
B and D.
And a D.
Yep, thank you.
Would be taken separately for voting, voting. Yep. Councillor Hammond, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair. There was a few petitions coming through in our committee, and of course, we had a wonderful presentation of the foreshore dog off leash area. I'll leave the debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. Anyone? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, hecko resist. I want to speak on item B and item D. So, in relation to item B, there was a petition that came through council last week, and it was from residents requesting for their safety and for their amendee that they have lighting in their dog parks. There are actually three dog parks there, one in Greenways Esplanade Park at Parkinson, one in Calenvale District Park, Calenvale, and one in Cole Bennett Park, which is in Alchester. It was, and the petition notes that there is a need for lighting, but the local councillor seems to think that it's not warranted. We, and we can't work out how this can be the case, having dog parks ourselves, and so many requests for lighting for people to use the dog parks, and that's even with dog parks that have residents around them. People understand that, that parks should be lit for safety reasons, and should be lit to a reasonable hour and then go off. So, we were a bit surprised about this. We asked for feedback in terms of what consultation was done, and we weren't able to get any feedback other than there had been consultation. Well, really, we think that it is...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Hammond.
He's misleading the chamber because I gave him what consultation was happening in my committee report last week.
That's not how it works. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair. Yes, we were given a little bit of feedback, we weren't given any details with regards to consultation, and I suppose for us, our concern, our concern remains...
Councillors, please allow this presentation to be heard in silence, please.
Yes, thank you. Our concern remains that these residents are missing out because their councillor has stepped in and said no, and we just think that there needs to be a representative out there who's interested in providing services for the residents of these suburbs, and ensuring that they get the same facilities as they get in the rest of the city, like a library. So, we really probably won't be voting for this particular, won't be agreeing with this particular petition outcome. Now, secondly, I'd like to go on and speak to item D, and that's requesting council negotiate the purchase of land owned by the Queensland Government at 266 Mount Cravat Road, 181941 and 51 Don Young Road, 30 Forest Court, and 10192029 and 30 of Innovation Court and Nathan, for incorporation into Tuie Forest Park to protect existing koala habitat and significant flora and fauna in this area. Simple. Simple, and many, many people signed this, over a thousand people signed this, and what it's saying is that this council should negotiate with the state government to get an outcome on this land. Now, whether that negotiation involves money, whether that negotiation involves trade-offs, whether that negotiation involves whatever, it's actually calling on this council to reach an outcome with the state government. And when I tell them what the Lord Mayor says, no, we won't do it, we're not paying money for public land, they go, that's a whole lot of hogwash, a whole lot of hogwash. This council should be working with the state to protect this land and to protect an active and alive koala population, not a dead koala population that we've killed because we allowed the site to be cleared, a site where we actually have alive koalas, where they're actually breeding, where they're doing very well. This is what...
Tennis courts.
No, not tennis courts, not driveways, not Cocos Palms. We want better. Residents want better. I was at the Maruka Salisbury Nathan Neighbourhood Watch last night, not neighbourhood watch, neighbourhood plan, and the same issue came up there.
Did they let me speak?
No, they wouldn't let me speak. They wouldn't let me speak. I was gagged from speaking. Gagged again. I did give them a little letter, but the officers were dying to get a copy of that to give to councillor Burke, but no, I didn't give him, or didn't give them one. But in relation to this, in relation, oh, he's got it, he's got it, he stole it off one of the...
Okay, we've all had our fun, eh? Let's keep moving on to the substance, please.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm just getting distracted.
Thanks, everyone. Please allow the speaker to be heard in silence.
I'll come back, I'll come back. We have here a great opportunity for our city. We have here a great opportunity for our city. And when this is put online for residents to say, "Do you want council to negotiate with the state to protect this land?", the resounding feedback from residents was, "Yes, we do." They don't want a Lord Mayor who's playing politics, who pretends he loves koalas and then won't go and look after them. They want a mayor who leads. They want politicians who lead. They want people who achieve outcomes. And that's what this petition is about. So I can't be voting for this ridiculous, the ridiculous response that this council's put, put here. It's a no-can-do response. It's we're not going to do anything response. It's from a mayor who's more interested in playing politics than achieving an outcome for the residents and for our bushland and for the future of our city. So no, this can't be supported by me. And disappointingly, Lord Mayor, I'll let people know what your silly response is and that you're not interested in actually achieving outcome, you're just interested in playing games. And, Lord Mayor, for someone, for someone who needs to win as many votes as you do and who has such a low profile, I think this is a really bad response. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I rise briefly just to correct the record because both Calenvale District Park and Greenways Espinard Park have both undergone master planning with the local residents which, who live immediately around those parks. And the other aspect, that councillors who make comments about particular locations, not in their wards, are not aware of some of the criminal activity that has caused certain police officers to raise their concerns with me about people's safety and to discourage people from being in those parks after dark. So this is a case of people making comment on issues that they don't know the full depth of. Consultation was undertaken and, and yes, I think councillor Hammond, you're right, this is somebody playing politics for politics' sake. And in particular, I, I go back to Calenvale District Park, and councillor Matic will remember the many, many consultation sessions we had, not only with the local community, but also the workshopping we did with the local students at three local schools to ensure that those young people had ownership and were empowered in having a say in those particular parks. So the important thing here is, you know, a good saying that a very wise man once said, "Engage brain before opening mouth and know the facts."
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yeah, well, I wasn't, wasn't going to say anything. Wasn't going to say anything, Minister Chairman.
Okay, all right, everybody.
I think everybody's all right.
Don't, don't lose your seat, councillor Griffiths, all right.
I was overtaken by a bit of the giggles.
Councillor Johnston?
I'm sorry, I'm ready, I am. Now, I was just going to say, look, honestly, this was a fascinating discussion at committee last week. And, oh, sorry, this is respect to item B. It was a fascinating discussion at committee last week because you've got a group of residents who are petitioning to have a dog park, which is in a park. The houses look a fair distance away, saying that they want lighting in the park. Now, we've just heard the local councillor say she consulted with school students, three local schools, I believe it were, I didn't notice a school near this park, and I'm not sure that the children were...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Owen.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
It is noted.
Yeah, three schools, since she consulted with all the children. And councillor Matic, you remember how much we consulted with the school children? Anyway, apparently, no, that's all wrong now as well. However, the issue here is, it does look like the residents would like some lighting in the dog park. And I know, I'm desperate for lighting in my dog parks, the number of requests that come up, and I've not had the benefit of capital funding, but I've managed to get lighting in quite a few of my dog parks using my trust funds, which has been an expensive process, but something I've done because of overwhelming levels of... No, no, it has not attracted criminals. Really? Oh, okay. I, I think it attracts people and their dogs who might be at work until six o'clock when it gets dark, but... So anyway, the, the part of this that was really odd is, and again, I do ask questions in committee, and I don't think that's a shock to anybody, but we did ask what the consultation was. And I completely agree with councillor, councillor Griffiths here. Councillor Hammond couldn't answer, and then, then I think she sort of said, "Well, it's the local councillor. She would have done consultation." And that, that wasn't an answer about how many people she talked to and all those kind of things. And then there was another sort of generic statement about, "Well, there was a lot of consultation about this park." So, look, I don't know what's gone on here, I have to say, but what I would say is, I know residents do want lighting in dog parks, so people who work during the day can use them at night. I know it's not appropriate in all areas, particularly where those dog parks are close to homes, which it does not appear to be the case here. And it's very interesting that, you know, it's, it's not my residents petitioning to get lights in councillor Owen's dog park, it's councillor Owen's residents who are, who are petitioning to get lights in hers, but it's all right because councillor Owen says no. And then there's a little bit of advice about criminals and talking, I think, was the outcome of that.
Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if the councillors on the other side had been listening, they would have heard that those parks underwent master planning processes where part of the consultation process was to engage local youth, to empower them to take ownership of the parks, so we didn't have vandalism in those parks.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks.
I believe the councillor is debating.
No.
Thank you.
I'm clarifying the point, Mr. Chair, that those, one of those parks is actually locked at night, anyway.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I rise just to contribute to the debate on item D, the purchase of land at Mount Cravat Road, Don Young Road and Innovation Court in Nathan. And I couldn't let what councillor Griffiths just said in his, his rambling speech before about koalas go to pass. Now, he mentioned this petition, signed by 1,800 people. It is a petition that says, "Save koala bushland." Well, of course, people are going to sign a petition calling on council to buy some koala bushland. Now, do you expect that 1,800 people who signed this petition have any idea of the political circumstances that surround this land? I doubt that, I doubt very much that they do, and I doubt very much that councillor Griffiths has done anything to inform them properly about the political circumstances that surround this land. But let's look at the facts. There are five parcels of land that the state control within the Tuie Forest. Four of them are managed by Queensland Parks and Wildlife Services, who have approached council to transfer that land to council at no cost whatsoever. There's one parcel of land, and, and there's one parcel of land in there that's owned by EDQ, which has approached council and asked us to purchase the land or threatened to develop it. That's the facts here, okay? So one part of the state government wants to just give us the land because they believe in the natural assets, the biodiversity, protecting koalas, supporting Brisbane's natural habitat areas. And another part of the state government wants to make a lot of money out of it. And they're happy to not make a lot of money out of it if it's not from developers, but they want council to pick up the tab. That is the only difference between these two sites. In other, between these five sites, are the different landowners. Four of them are owned by Queensland Parks and Wildlife, and one of them is owned by EDQ. And the only difference here is that councillor Griffiths, because he is so gutless, he refuses to stand up to the state Labor government and call upon them...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, councillor Griffiths?
Yeah, point of order, I just find that language offensive, to be called gutless. And I believe you should, he should be made to withdraw that statement.
Councillor Murphy?
I withdraw, Deputy Chair, but I note that councillor Griffiths has used that characterization several times in the time that I've been here in the chamber to describe other councillors. Now, he said that there are live koalas in there on the site, and he doesn't want to see them killed. Well, we all agree with you, councillor Griffiths. You should stop your friends in the Labor state government from developing the land and doing just that because that is exactly what they are threatening to do. No one on this side is doing that. So don't, don't try to confect an enemy in people on this side of the chamber, councillor Griffiths, because we are not your enemy. It's your, it's your, it's Mark Bailey, it's Anthony Lyneham, they are your enemies here. They are the enemies of koalas in this city, and you should be ashamed of the political games you're playing here.
Councillor Griffiths? Councillor Griffiths? Councillor Murphy did the courtesy of doing withdrawal. You can at least show some respect and remain quiet while he continues to speak. I'm glad, I concur. Councillor Murphy? Councillor Murphy? Councillor Griffiths? Can you please exercise some restraint? I'd appreciate it, thank you. Councillor Murphy, do you have anything more? Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on a couple of the comments that were made tonight. To see councillor, we don't let truth get in the way of a good story in this, or those over there don't. It was clearly explained last week in the committee report that there was two master plans done on the dog-off-leash areas and the parks, the councillor Owen. It was clearly said that letters were gone out, flyers gone out, and community events were held as part of the consultation process. So let us not believe the mistruths that we hear from those opposite. I also want to carry on to something that councillor Burke said on item D. Councillor Burke said previously in his speech that the ALP only say half the story. They don't finish what's actually there written as a petition response for item D, where it says, "Council remains determined to ensure the state, state government-owned bushland is protected from development and negotiations with the Queensland Government. Will continue the aim of securing positive outcomes for the significant habitat of the Nathan area." I also find it amusing that only AL, koalas only reproduce in the ALP areas, which he said in his speech, which is quite nonsense, really. But let's just get down...
Excuse me. Point of order? Point of order, councillor Griffiths?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the ALP as well for actually coming back into the room for this wonderful committee report, because it was very vast over there with only one of them, where they disappeared for half the meeting, it would seem. Mr. Chair, on item D, it's actually all on the beautiful camera, everyone would have seen, you were out. I said, "Welcome back." Welcome back, welcome back. I wish I could sing, actually, I can't. So let me just get on to the seriousness of this report and this petition. Let me be clear. The state government own this land, I've said this before. So that means the people of Brisbane also own this land. I would like to thank Minister Enoch for actually giving us, you can see, three rather beautiful green spots, large green bits of land, that Minister Enoch has handed over to council at zero dollars, at zero dollars. As you can see, this little red bit of land is the land in question. But we don't let the truth get in the good sto, in, in the way of a good story, of course, because there is no reason why the state government has to sell this land off to developers or to council when it's already owned by everybody here. But I can really, I can sympathize with councillor Griffiths because he's seen the pegs in the ground that residents have sent me photos of. He's sent, he's seen the fact that they're clearing for a bush, a fire buffer. And you only do that if you're going to develop that land, wouldn't you? He has, I feel sorry for him that he can't stand up and Minister Bailey can't stand up to Minister Dick and say, "Please take those pegs out of the ground at Tuie Forest. Please don't sell this land. Please don't do it like you did to that beautiful bushland in 818 Rhodey Road, Cherm Side, for a massive, massive profit that could never be developed." And Brisbane City Council went and, and refused the development application, was overruled by the state government. I understand his concern, and I purely under, I, I support you, councillor Griffiths, with your, with your concern. But I would also ask you, why is it okay that the good grace of Minister Enoch handed over land to council to preserve this koala habitat for free, but Minister Dick wants to put those little red stakes in the ground to subdivide? I would ask, well, they don't talk to each other, obviously, they haven't given the memo of, "We need to get more cash because we're broke, so sell it to council, force council to buy it, force the, force the ratepayers and the taxpayers of, of Brisbane to re-buy this land that they already own." So councillor Griffiths, I would encourage you to contact your mate down the road and ask him to take those little red pegs out. Stop clearing land for the fire break, which again, is only done when you're going to develop. And stop your mates, you know him better than I do. We're negotiating, our council officers are speaking to the state government right now because it seems that it's only this side of the chamber that is determined, absolutely determined, to save our koalas and wildlife and increase our wildlife corridors. Because again, closing, this land is protected right now. It is protected because it's owned by the states. Get rid of the red pegs, I say, and keep this land as a beautiful corridor and koala habitat.
Councillor Griffiths, your misrepresentation?
Yes, I have two, actually. So one, the first one was koalas only breed in ALP wards. Well, I don't know where the council got that from, but that is wrong. And the second one is that I haven't stood up to the minister. The, the councillor would not know who I've stood up to or not. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item, we're going to vote on item A and C first. So all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Item B is next. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no?
No.
Sounds like the ayes have it. Division.
That was definitely the nose had that one. What happens to you lot when they're not in the room?
Your hearing is really bad. Councillor Johnston? Councillor Johnston? Division called by councillor Johnson, second by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, please. Can you ring, thank you? Just pay, yes, just pay. Attention, please, first bar. Class, can you please read the result?
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and six against.
We'll now vote on item D. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The noes?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division, division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and six against.
Ladies and gentlemen, please return to your chairs.
Point of order, Mr Deputy Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Uh, yes, Mr Deputy Chairman, uh, I move that the motion for sixty, for the purchase of sixty-seven Chapman Place Oxley, uh, be taken off the table.
Seconded. We have a motion to-
It's a procedural motion, uh, to take it off the table, you just need to move a vote on it, no debate.
Okay. All those in favour of taking, uh, sixty-seven Chapman off the table?
Aye.
So, the noes?
No.
Noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Uh, we have a division called by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Councillors, please remain quiet while voting is taking place, thank you. Sorry, attendance, please close the bars, clerks, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
Thank you, councillors, please return to your chairs. Councillors, we turn our attention to Field Services Committee, councillor Howard.
Uh, thank you, Mr Acting Chair. Um, I move that the report of the Field Services Committee held on Tuesday the fifteenth of October twenty nineteen be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Marks, the report of the Field Services Committee dated Tuesday the fifteenth of October twenty nineteen be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Um, yes, just briefly, we had a fantastic presentation on the summer storm season preparedness and, uh, won, um, petition.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, I rise to speak on item, uh, B, and I'd like item B taken, uh, seriatum for voting purposes. Uh, I've said in this chamber, um, a couple of times in recent weeks, that the LMP have stopped consulting me about petitions in my ward, and this is another example of, uh, their, um, problematic dealings with, uh, the, um, me, opposition councillors. Um, the divisional manager of this division says this is not happening, and after the independent review that the CEO had to undertake, how she could deny that this is actually happening is beyond me. So I'm going to table the documents that I have to support this. Last year, I asked for a street in Yoronga, um, which does not have Kerben Channel down one side, to be assessed for Kerben Channel. Not an unreasonable request, it's a small residential street in Yoronga, uh, called Stevens Lane, um, and at the request of residents who live in this street, I requested, uh, Kerben Channel for their street. The response came back from, not, you know, pretty normal kind of, um, response, you know, or question. Um, the response came back from asset services, no, you can't have Kerben Channel. So I duly reported that back to the residents, and I said, I think we should try a petition, we need to let council know we're serious, we need to make sure they're aware of what an important issue it is to you, it gives the opportunity for this to be brought up to full council for debate. So, uh, the residents amongst themselves, um, decided to go ahead and do a petition. Uh, and, uh, that petition, um, was tabled, uh, earlier this year, um, signed by the residents who live in the street, calling for Kerben Channel for Stevens Lane. What happens next can only be described as the most disrespectful process that I have seen in council towards Brisbane residents in a very long time. Brisbane City Council officers, uh, decided simply to asphalt the area right up to the front fences of the residents. So they've not put in Kerben Channel, they've not consulted with them, they've not consulted with me, um, they didn't put in verge gardens, they didn't establish a footpath, they didn't put in the Kerben Channel, they put asphalt right up to the front fence without any demarcation of where the road and the footpath are, right up to the front fences of these properties in Stevens Lane. This was all done despite there being a petition that council officers were asked to consider, um, of, with the construction of Kerben Channel. Now, the way I know about this is, the asphalt went down on the street, and of course, the residents ring me saying, Nicole, what's happening, why is the asphalt going down on the street? I ring councillor, I ring asset services and say, what are you doing, why are you putting asphalt down on the street? And I find out, well, we're putting asphalt on the street councillor. And I'm like, well, hang on a minute, we've got a petition asking for Kerben Channel. Oh, no councillor, we're putting asphalt down. So then I make a formal complaint to the new lord mayor and the CEO, and guess what? Um, they're like, oh, I don't know, but then I complain and they refer it off to an independent review. The independent review, which I'm going to table in just a moment, um, basically acknowledges that the residents weren't consulted, I wasn't consulted, I wasn't told, and the officers did not follow the petition process. Divisional manager up there in Brisbane Square, are you listening? Letter from the CEO dated the sixteenth of August two thousand and nine, a letter clearly stating that the council officers did not follow council's petition process. It is appalling. The completion of the work was undertaken before the petition was considered. No prior notification of the works was given to the residents or me. They weren't even told council was coming into their street, shutting it down and closing it off to put the asphalt in right up to their front fence. Now, I'm sure you can imagine what would happen in your home in your street if council suddenly came in and whacked asphalt down to your front fence. Honestly, I don't know what this council's doing. And councillor Howard, it reflects extremely poorly on this council that it is happening time and time and time again. Last week, same people, same area, a petition about a park where I wasn't consulted. Um, it's happened over and over and over again, and I'm going to table the letter. Now, um, what's worse, I'll table another letter in just a second, is that the response that I got from the CEO about this basically says, yes, we did the wrong thing and we're sorry, great. So I'm like, well, how do we fix this? Um, you know, I had a verbal discussion with council officers, well, we, that's fine, I, I can see that the wrong thing was done, duh, that's what I knew six months ago, but what are we going to do to fix it? And I said, can we look at putting in the Kerben Channel now, can we look at a verge garden so they don't have this nasty asphalt right up to their front fence? And the officers say to me, well, um, we'll talk about it. So the head of asset services, South Region, talked to the general manager of, um, uh, field services, and they went back and forth, and apparently somebody there said no. I don't know if it's Kristen Booth, I don't know if it's Micah Julian, or I don't know if it's Vicky Howard, but the answer came back to me verbally, we're not going to do anything to fix the problem that you created. So I write to the CEO again and say, how are you going to fix this problem that was created by serious error by council officers who completely did the wrong thing, contrary to policy, contrary to common sense, contrary to council's notification standards? How are you going to fix this? I get another letter back, this one's more recent, in September. He basically says in here, uh, that, uh, he says that in relation to my query about options to resolve the matter, um, it was advised in the review, which is the other document I've tabled, the final resolution to the issue in Stevens Lane will be concluded in the final petition response, which is, we're doing nothing. If you read this petition response, you wouldn't even be aware of all the things that have gone on. It basically kind of glosses over the fact that you did this without even consulting me, without consulting or even telling the residents, and without considering the petition. Now, if you want to know what's wrong with this council, this is exactly what's wrong. You ride roughshod over the request of residents, you ignore the local councillor, you whack in a terrible solution, this is a nasty solution, bitumen up to the front fence of these residents' properties. It is appalling, and the response from council is, we're not going to do anything about it. So let me be clear today, this is a disgusting decision by council. If councillor Howard wants to stand up and, and basically say, I'm being mean to the council officers, well, let me tell you, the administrative review conducted by council makes it pretty clear that they acted improperly and without abiding by council policy, without consultation, notification to me or anybody else, and that is shocking, appalling and common. So I will not be voting for item B, because I don't believe Brisbane residents, and particularly those in Stevens Lane, Yoronga, should be treated this way. And I can tell you that they've made a formal complaint to the Queensland Ombudsman, and I hope the ombudsman throws the book at council for treating the residents so disrespectfully.
Further debate?
Mr Chairman, can I just ask a question, please, or guidance? Um, is there any way that we can have the council officers' full names taken out, um, of the handsart and the audio, please?
One moment councillor Hammond, find out. Councillor Hammond, uh, the names of the officers can be removed, uh, from the handsart.
Point of order. The only names that were mentioned were senior management people, and only with respect to the fact that I discussed things with them and they discussed it with each other. So, um, there's no problem with that whatsoever, it's a matter of public record. I'd love to name the officers that did this, but that would not be appropriate.
Uh, councillor Johnson, I believe the question was could, not, it wasn't a request, it was could. Thank you. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, then I would like to formally request that the council officers' full names are removed from the handsart and public record of this place. I think it's absolutely disgraceful that an elected member would stand up here and absolutely, um, speak that way about hard-working council officers. So I formally request, um, that the couns- that the names are removed from handsart.
Uh, thank you councillor Hammond, I believe there's a separate process outside this chamber to deal with that, and that can be dealt with outside the chamber. Thank you. Uh, is there further debate, ah, sorry councillor Strunk.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr Deputy Chair. Listen, um, in regards, I, I just want to speak just briefly about this petition, uh, item B. Um, when councillor Cook and I were, were in the, uh, in the committee, um, we were ma- we were appraised of some of the issues in regards to the petitioners and what they were requesting. We had some inkling as that there had been some, uh, issues, uh, but we were not fully appraised, uh, as councillor, uh, Johnson is now, um, so eloquently and passionately, uh, let, let the chamber know what, and has tabled documents. So, um, we, we decided that we would abstain, and I think that was probably a very good idea at the time, but, uh, honestly, um, we'll, uh, we'll now be voting against the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Strunk. Uh, further debate? No, councillor Howard? One moment, please councillors, one moment, can we just drop the temperature a little bit, have a bit of calm and allow councillor Howard to finish, please? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, can I just say, we are all human beings, and human beings make mistakes. They certainly do not deserve what has just been served up to them. Can I just put on the record how proud I am of every single employee that works for field services, they're the people that I see day in, day out, out there busting their gut, and I can say that, and doing the work that makes this city the city that it is. And I can't believe that an elected representative will stand in this chamber and name people absolutely appalling. So, Chair, let me just continue. Yes, mistakes were made, that was admitted at the committee. Councillor Johnson was not at the committee, as councillor Strunk has just said, there was a lot of information that was given at the committee, and let me put it into the record now. Mistakes were made by officers in the handling of the petition, and I apologise for that, not any other person, me, I'm the chair, and if something goes wrong, I can wear it. So I apologise. This is not reflective of council standards at all, and in addition-
One, one moment, please councillor Howard, councillor Johnson.
So I don't hear it, I don't-
Councillor Howard, please. Councillor Johnson, I under- Councillor Johnson, I understand councillor Howard is making an apology. You could at least do the decency of letting her finish. Councillor Johnson. Whatever, just be quiet. Councillor Howard.
Under standing orders, I'm entitled to be addressed by my proper name and I'd appreciate it if you did so.
Thank you councillor, I will note that. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Chair. And again, some politeness in this chamber would not go astray. Let me begin again. This is not reflective of council standards at all and in addition to the formal investigation undertaken by the CEO at the request of councillor Johnston, we have made sure that processes have been put in place to prevent a situation such as this from being repeated in the future. That being said, the fact remains that Kerben channel would not serve any practical function on the southern side of the street as it is higher than the northern side of the street, which already has Kerben channel installed. That is why council officers undertook asphalting works on the southern side of the street, which has provided a practical and effective solution for residents. That was addressed in the committee, we had a long conversation about how that occurred. What councillor Johnston doesn't seem to understand is that council is not in the business of carrying out works just for the sake of it. The installation of Kerben channel here would serve no practical purpose whatsoever. And whilst I understand councillor Johnson's concerns with the procedure and the timing of the works, we cannot waste ratepayers' funds by installing infrastructure where it is not needed and serves no practical benefit to the ratepayers of Brisbane. This petition was delayed due to the formal investigation requested by councillor Johnston in her letter to the CEO and as councillor Johnston requested an investigation during the course of the petition, the petition process was put on hold until that investigation was completed and closed out by the CEO. I made this very clear at the committee meeting that I had brought the petition to the committee the first opportunity after recess. So for the chambers, I just need to say, once again, I put on record my thanks always to our wonderful workers who are out there and the work that they do is just nothing short of amazing. This city has a reputation that is second to none and it is because of the work of those hardworking people that are out there. So I apologise to them for councillor Johnston's comments and what I say now is...
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Councillor Howard has no right to speak on my behalf, no right to apologise on my behalf.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Councillor Howard, councillor Howard, please continue. No, councillor Johnston, this is not a point of order, this is an act of disorder and you will no longer be heard. Thank you councillor Johnston. Councillor Howard, please continue.
Thank you Chair. Once again, thank you to all of the hardworking officers that we have here.
All right, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour of item A, say aye.
Aye.
And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Now, now on item B, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths? Councillor Strunk. Eyes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour, five against and one abstention.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee report please, councillor Matic.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fifteenth of October two thousand and nineteen be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Matic, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday the fifteenth of October twenty nineteen be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Matic?
Yes, Mr Chairman. Before I get to the actual report, I just wanted to inform the chamber of another award that our amazing call centre has been successful in. There were two categories that the customer service section of the call centre applied for and were successful in those two categories at the two thousand and nineteen AusContact Association National Awards, which were held at the Brisbane Convention and Exhibition Centre on Friday evening. AusContact is the peak body for the customer contact industry in Australia and so the awards and the two categories who won has significant standing, not only within our state but across the nation. The two categories, the first one being was the People's Champion category, which recognises individuals who are responsible for the development and growth of people within an organisation. Customer Service is excited to announce that one of their own officers won the two thousand and nineteen National People Champion of the Year category. And the other finalists of this category, just to see the level of competition that we face, was Spotless in Western Australia, Allianz in South Australia, Recovery Corp in Victoria and the People Care Health Insurance in New South Wales. So we have organisations of both state and national standing of which this category and one of council's officers was the winner of that. And it's great to see at that level, that level of attention that obviously is reflective of customer service, that it's also about looking after your co-workers. And it's wonderful to see that strong sense of collaboration and partnering within that branch is reflected. The customer category recognises excellence in customer outcomes including approaches to deliver and drive customer experience inclusive of evidence of customer centricity. And I'm pleased to be able to announce that the customer services was the winner in this category. The finalists for this category included Bankwest in Western Australia, Bendigo and Adelaide Bank in South Australia, Probe Group which is Coles in Victoria and Services New South Wales in the Parramatta Contact Centre. So the award, one of them is this Customer Services Team Award, which the officers will be very proudly displaying in their awards cabinet. But it just again goes to show, Mr Chair, the passion and commitment of all the officers within the Contact Centre and obviously the ancillary services that support it and their always passionate commitment to service to all of Brisbane's residents through this amazing call centre and everything that it does. So I would personally like to congratulate both the officer and the customer service employees on this recognition at the national level. This team continues to create outstanding experiences for our customers, showing their dedication to a better Brisbane. And obviously, we all know as councillors, the high praise that the call centre receives and obviously continues to receive. Mr Chairman, I'd like to move to the committee presentation, which I'd like to thank the officers for, which was the two thousand and nineteen Indigenous Art Programme, NADOC Week and Black History Month. All councillors that were present at the committee presentation were very supportive of the work that officers do in this very important space and it was a great presentation highlighting the work that officers do but importantly, the partnerships that council has with so many different organisations of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander descent within our city and the work that we as a council do to be able to support our First Australians in representing their culture and their works to a wider community. I also wanted to take the opportunity to recognise part of their presentation, which was the decoration of four council buses with Indigenous artwork by local artists and I wanted to thank Transport for Brisbane for their great assistance in being able to turn around that opportunity for us. I also very much want to thank the Lord Mayor for his support in ensuring that this occurred. Lord Mayor, thank you so much for your work. The idea itself was originated from our Inclusive Brisbane Board. There was a member there who presented the idea to me and said that it was always a passion of his that we make sure that our Indigenous history in art and culture is ingrained across our city and our suburbs and for him, it was about making sure that his dad was aware of the enormous contribution of our Indigenous community. So on that note, I'd like to thank our Inclusive Brisbane Board, the Lord Mayor for making it happen and the officers for their absolutely invaluable work within this space. Thank you, Mr Jim.
Thank you. Further speakers? Oh, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Given that the bells have just tolled seven PM, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Hammond, that this council now adjourn for a period of one hour for the purpose of dinner, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
To the contrary, no? The ayes have it. See you all in any hour.